There we go. Good afternoon, everyone. I have some feedback. Okay, let's try this. Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the City of Delray Beach's regular commission meeting scheduled for Tuesday, November 16th, 2021, 4:00 p.m. Please call the roll. Mr. Frankel.
Present.
Ms. Cassell.
Here.
Mr. Boylston.
Present.
Ms. Johnson.
Present.
Mayor Petruia. Here. Please stand for the pledge. Okay, we're at the agenda approval point. Any changes? City manager, city attorney, any of the commission?
I'm going to, it's on the consent agenda and I'm not looking at it with my glasses. The item that talks about the shade, I think it's 6E.
Talks about?
The shade for Pompeii Park.
Oh, yes, I believe that.
Is it still there?
6H2.
6G.
Which one?
6H2.
6H2.
Okay, do we want to pull that and put it on the regular?
Yes, regular, please.
Okay. 7AA, that becomes, anything else? Seeing none, accept a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Call the roll, please. Ms. Cassell.
Yes.
Mr. Boylston.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Petruia.
Yes.
Mr. Frankel.
Yes.
All right, our first presentation will be Ms. LaShay King to announce, I believe. Hello.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Commission. I am so excited today, y'all. We have something super special. On today, we have an employee of the month presentation. I need you all to give a round of applause to Danielle Pearson. Danielle, if you can please come up to the front.
Right in front of you.
Where is she? Well, come on up. Alrighty, her director, Mr. Sam Mietat, is here to tell you exactly what Danielle did to deserve it.
How do you follow that, Sam?
I know, right? She always makes it tough. Good afternoon, Sam Mietat, Director of Parks and Recreation. I'm excited to be here today for this opportunity to recognize Danielle. As many of you know, about a month ago Danielle and I spoke and she decided to agree to step up and help us in a little transition time here we have over at the Old School Square complex. Danielle's hit the ground running and she's been an extremely helpful and amazing customer service representative for the city as she's helped us with the coordination of some weddings, bat mitzvahs, Orchid Society, the Witch's Ride, and upcoming Handcrafter, Southern Handcrafter Society event starting tomorrow. So, she's been busy, she's going to continue to be busy for a few months here, but she's been an amazing asset for us, helping coordinate just every aspect of these events, sometimes picking them up kind of halfway through and finding out what the needs are, a little late, but she's been able to make those things happen. So, we're really proud of her, we're really excited about the opportunity that she's had here and she's just knocked it out of the park. So, we're excited to offer her this employee of the month nomination and can't congratulate her enough. So, Danielle, congratulations.
So, on behalf of the mayor and commission, she will get that wonderful plaque that her director has already presented to her and a certificate for eight hours off.
Thank you so much and so well deserved. Did you want to say anything?
I'm good. I appreciate you guys. Thank you so much.
All right, well, let me tell you something. We appreciate you more than you know. We, I mean, this has not been easy. You've stepped in, you've held, you've done us such a service by being able to pick up some balls that were ready to hit the ground and I was able to follow up with a couple of the events, the persons that were putting on the events and they had nothing but great things to say about you Danielle. So, I just want to say thank you from the bottom of our hearts that you are really doing a great job for the city and it is really reflecting in the community. So, we really thank you for that and well deserved.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
All right, you got it. Love that she brought her kids. Okay, so our second presentation is of the Green Local Government Certification from Florida, the Green Building Coalition. Coalition. All right.
Good afternoon. Ken Edwards, Sustainability Officer for the City of Delray Beach and I'm happy to introduce CJ Davila, the Executive Director for the Florida Green Building Coalition.
Good afternoon. My name is CJ Davila and I'm the Executive Director of the Florida Green Building Coalition. The Green Building Coalition was formed in 2000 and is the leading certifier of green building within the state of Florida, having just surpassed 26,000 projects. To date, 78 local governments have participated in the Green Local Government Program. The program is unique within the country as it creates an environment of communication and coordination amongst different departments. This collaboration streamlines processes, decreases redundancies, and generates new approaches towards sustainability and resource preservation. Its success emanates from the fact that there's a sizable and compelling return on investment for any municipality, thus reducing the cost to taxpayers. This designation demonstrates exemplary leadership by Mayor Petruia, Vice Mayor Johnson, Deputy Vice Mayor Frankel, Commissioners Boylston, Cassell, and the City Manager's Office and Department Directors who provided the framework and support to move forward with the certification. I also wanted to recognize Kent Edwards and all of the staff that worked on this tremendous accomplishment. Also, would like to take a minute to thank the City Manager more for his support. The Green Certification Program scores the city in terms of categories. These include energy efficiency, water, economic development, tourism, emergency management, planning and zoning, and many more. In each category that the points are achieved, some of the highlights from the City of Delray Beach include maintain an office person or group to coordinate current and future green activities, enact and enforce a Florida-friendly landscape ordinance for new construction, maintain a green fleet program, utilize energy-efficient streetlights and crosswalks, and create a reclaimed water infrastructure. The City of Delray Beach achieved 25% of its 316 applicable points, earning them a bronze level designation. The City of Delray Beach, to date, is the highest-scoring city in 2021. So, great accomplishment. On behalf of our members, our Board of Directors, and the citizens of the state of Florida, we'd like to recognize the City of Delray Beach for all of their efforts to create a sustainable, resilient, and environmentally responsible community. Thank you.
Thank you. And hopefully, this is just the beginning.
And we do have a plaque.
Oh, wow. Fabulous. All right, beautiful. Show it. That's very nice, very nice. Yeah, I know, right? Thank you so much. That's great. And thank you for everything you've been doing, Kent. We've really appreciated your, you know, leading us down this path of green and I think that we, as a city, need to focus on as much of that as we can do, including just the greening as one of my colleagues has always talked about with the canopy and trees and whatnot too, because it always adds to it. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Appreciate your support.
All right. And moving on to the third presentation, which is the EJS Project.
Good evening, Members of Chair and Commission. How y'all doing?
Doing well.
All right, it's good to be here. I'm Emmanuel Dupree Jackson. I'm the founder of the EJS Project and I'm going to really quickly share for those who aren't familiar, as familiar with EJS Project, our mission. EJS Project challenges perceptions of the community and its youth by supporting teens and cultivating their talents and their future. By aspiring leadership, equity of opportunity, and stewardship, EJS builds and empowers tomorrow's leaders. Another statement that's important for us is our Equity Statement. EJS Project acknowledges racial discrimination and the barriers it has created in communities of colors. EJS is dedicated to teaching truth, challenging systems, and fighting for our youth access to opportunity. Those two were important for me to share because it leads to how we came about this program, our Young Legislative Program. And we did have a presentation prepared, but in preparation and throughout this program, which started back in April, part of this program was having our teens share a little story about their social background, how they came up, and also why they think it's important to learn about the Young Legislative Program. And when we concluded our program and our trip to Alabama in the Equal Justice Initiative, we had them do another essay, sharing, telling us about their experience and things that left an impact on them. And when we were discussing this, I thought it would be more impactful if they shared the things that stuck out to me and made me say, wow, I'm glad you caught that. So, that's why we're here presenting. We did send the presentation ahead of time. We have a video that we will play. It's only two minutes to kind of sum up and wrap up and give the crowd a little feel for what we're doing, but we want to spend the most time just letting, giving our kids a chance to share a little bit about what made this program impactful to them. But I didn't want to forget certain people, important people, that made this program possible, starting with Christina Romulus, Commissioner, City of Boynton, Gervonta Edmonds, founder of Sustfa Seniors, County Commissioner, Matt Bernard, Mr. Talman Hayes, Senator Lori Berman, our County Supervisor of Elections, Wendy Link, State Representative, Amari Hardy, and our City Commissioner, Ryan Boston. So, as a part of this program and before we took the trip to Alabama to visit Equal Justice Initiative, our kids went through a two-day workshop called Racial Equity Institute, which is very impactful. If any adult in the room have attended, we figured out a way to bring that down to a level for our youth. It took some time, but we got it done and it was extremely impactful. It actually helped open their mind and eyes up to certain things before we got to Montgomery, Alabama. And as you can expect, the things that we learned, the history that we learned that wasn't taught in Alabama really was an eye-opener and left a great impression. So, that's my time talking and I'm going to pass it over to Billy Penn.
Hello, my name is William Penn. I'm in 11th grade. I go to Village Academy and I wanted to share my experience.
There you go.
My experience was good in Montgomery, Alabama because I learned at EJI that all the recorded hang sites, they dug soil, like for the recorded people, and they put it in jars with their names on it. And two people that stuck out that we met were Matt Bernard and Verdinia Baker, which is the County Commissioner and the Administrator. And I appreciate them for sharing their knowledge to us and telling us how it works. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kayla Lemar. I am a junior at Atlantic High School and my favorite part of the trip was getting to know everybody because I was new to the group at first. And it was interesting how we only saw 1% of the hangings that happened in the United States and we also saw two from Palm Beach County.
Hi, everybody. How you doing? My name is Reggie and I just wanted to say as of 2019, the EJI, the EJI organization have presented more than, have prevented more than 125 people from receiving a death penalty.
Hello, everyone. My name is Taika Promefill. Some pro that I learned from the Young Legislative Program is the fact that the whole trip was educational and entertaining. Another thing I learned were the important events that were left out in school that I learned. And also, something that popped, that stood out the most were the pop-up museums, which were, they had still monuments hanging, which held away over 4,000 lynch, lynch sites, sorry.
How y'all doing? My name is Mark Derasaw. I'm the EJS Program Coordinator. I just want to say our kids are always telling us thank you and how grateful they are for me and Mr. Dupree. And I just want to say, we thank y'all for believing in Mr. Dupree, for letting us mentor you guys and showing you guys, you know, just exposing you guys to new experiences. And my mom always said, for every good blessing, there's a good sacrifice. And we want to say that. You guys have been a good sacrifice for us and a good blessing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well said. I'm watching the clock, so I want to save two minutes to share the video. But yeah, that's it. We can kind of get to the video, but one thing I do want to share is, you heard our Equity Statement we started with in our Mission Statement. You know how important and how vital, how passionate we are about this work. And it was good to have support from our founders who are just as passionate about this work. And they actually have a cool term that I have adopted now, but they identify what we do and how we do and what we're trying to instill in these kids. They identify this and recognize this as a vital conditions. And we do have Children's Service Council joining us in support. And this program is funded by Children's Service Council and we couldn't do this, especially these spirits opening it up and growing from the suits. How we look, y'all?
Look great.
Little things like that. It makes a world of difference. Thank you. And you know, it's just an upgrade. This is our second year. We look forward to doing this every year and we look forward to even exposing them to more of our local leaders, all of our City Commissioners. I want them to know you. Madam Mayor, you know, we've been doing things together for a while and we got to get that City Government Day back. I remember memories from that.
Absolutely.
It's really important for our kids to know who their local elected officials are, their county elected officials are, their state elected officials are. And you know, the people who make decisions that impact their life. So, we had a chance to introduce them through this program and want to continue to do that. And I'll go ahead and queue up the two-minute video and that's right on time.
That's good.
Do we have it? I guess it's not queued up. I sent the video as well. Well, we'll just go through the slides. That's week by week, Gervonta Edmonds taught about etiquette, also provided these suits. So, thanks to Gervonta Edmonds for helping us get these suits all tailored, our visit with Commissioner Matt Bernard, that's Mr. Talman Hayes. He was actually, Reggie mentioned, the number of people who were freed or helped be freed or exonerated through by EJI, he was one of them. He was serving, I think, 37 consecutive life sentences and he was sentenced at the age of 16 and he was released, I think, in 2016. And he's a friend of our program and was mentor to our youth. Senator Lori Berman stopped by EJS to pour into our kids and share a little bit. Wendy Link, Supervisor of Elections. Again, Mr. Talman Hayes and Mr. Amari Hardy. And that's us at the Equal Justice Initiative in Montgomery, Alabama. And throughout those slides, you guys saw a couple of familiar faces. Talman, it's hard for him to miss anything. And also, our amazing board member, Nancy Shannon, she's also here tonight. She doesn't miss anything. If you know her, this is right up her alley. And she's, she's been a blessing to us, a connector, helping us get connected. But this city, Delray, we're proud to work here. I'm proud to be able to impact the kids' life in this city and we're proud to be able to present in front of you. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Dupree, Mr. Dupree, are you aware that the EJS, no, the Equal Justice Institute, rather, initiative is researching the two that were mentioned who were lynched in the county?
I am, with the county-wide initiatives that they have going on, yes. And we're trying to be a part of that.
Very good. We're looking forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, very good. So, on to comments and inquiries on agenda and non-agenda items. We'll start off with the City Manager's response for any prior public comments or inquiries.
Not at this time, however, we have a couple of updates to accompany the process. So, I'd like to begin with 5A1, if I may, Madam Mayor, as we have leadership from Delray Beach Fire Rescue, including the Emergency Services Coordinator, Chris Bell. The purpose of this presentation is to offer an epidemiology update with respect to the status of COVID-19 and the associated statistical analysis. The basis for this is because a number of municipalities, including Delray Beach, has been receiving information from Palm Beach County regarding such information and what steps they are taking to create a more comfortable environment, so to speak, in response to the epidemiology analysis associated with COVID-19. We are here to offer an update for Mayor and City Commission Review and Evaluation, as well as for the public at large. However, Chief Tommy, Mr. Bell, of course, the caveat will also take under consideration what happens after the holiday season. So, while we do have considerations to be made available publicly, we are embarking on the holiday season, given Thanksgiving a week from this coming Thursday, and to the remainder of the holiday season until the beginning of New Year's Day, we need to be mindful of any fluctuations that might be experienced in that regard. And of course, ladies and gentlemen, any considerations regarding creating a more comfortable environment, offering relief and alleviating restrictions here in municipal facilities and that should likewise take effect sometime right after the holiday season. In other words, if the positive epidemiology reports continue to remain the case immediately after the holiday season, then we would be more comfortable to proceed as noted. I offer that background also because Palm Beach County recently offered a communication stating that they were lifting some requirements and safety measures in that regard as well. But again, considering where we are with respect to the holiday season, we need to be mindful in that regard as well. So, if I may, Madam Mayor, again, Chief Tommy, Mr. Bell are all here to offer a brief update in terms of where we are statistically, as well as from an epidemiology standpoint, and hopefully, that clarity will be well understood. Chief Tommy.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Commissioners, Keith Tommy, your fire chief. As you know, the Fire Department Emergency Management has been following the COVID pandemic 19 since the beginning. You know, we've been providing updates to City Manager's Office, the other departments, the community, since March of 2020. Tonight, we have some very good news. The Palm Beach County COVID community risk is at moderate and has been at moderate for quite some time and our positivity rate has decreased now to below 5%. It's been that way for five weeks. So, those are all great news. Like Mr. Moore said, Palm Beach County has lifted their mask mandate. And to go into more detail, I'd like to introduce our Emergency Management Manager, Chris Bell.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. Good to see you again. We're at a happy point on, happily, finally, I think, in the COVID-19 pandemic. As you see on the chart, which I think you've seen in many versions in the past year and a half, we are at now the lowest level since essentially the beginning of the pandemic, both in, this chart is the new daily cases. There were times where we were 20,000 and 23,000 new cases per day and now we're 1,000 to 2,000 new cases a day. So, this is very good news. Next slide. At the same time, our positivity percentage, as Chief just mentioned, you see the last, at the very right, the last five blue dots are all below 5%. We're at 2.5% positivity. That's the lowest rate since we began testing at all, since the pandemic began. And at the same time, we still have a lot of tests being performed. You can see the pink line or pink blocks there. It's 61,000 tests performed in a week in the state and 2.5%. So, it's not that there are a lot of undiagnosed cases there. It's this is, we're capturing them. The rate is just much lower than it was. And this is really the reason why. This is vaccination rates, right? So, we've, early in the pandemic where before the, or once the vaccinations began in December of last year, you see we had a rapid uptake in the older population. And then, once the other populations, other age brackets were able to become vaccinated, we had a slower uptake. You see in August, the gray shading at the bottom was kind of how many new vaccinations occurred per week at that point. That was really the beginning of the Delta variant that started to pass through the country. As of right now, 99.8% of the new cases in Florida and in Palm Beach County are the Delta variant. And so, that's essentially the only version of the COVID-19 virus that's passing around right now. So, you see particularly in the 65 and older population, we're at 88. In Palm Beach County, we're actually 89 or 90% vaccinated. And we see just recently, the very bottom line of the 2.3%, that's the 5 to 11-year-olds, are just now eligible to receive the Pfizer vaccine. So, that number is just creeping up. In total, 13 million people in Florida have received at least one shot of the vaccine and we have 3.5 million people who we know haven't had a positive test. So, they've had COVID at least once. So, that's 16.5 million people out of 20.5 million people in the state. If you add in the 5 to 11-year-olds and the 12 to 19-year-olds who haven't been eligible until recently, we've got a lot of those people. And then finally, projections. The University of Washington's Institute of Health Metrics and Evaluation has been one of the sources that CDC and we have been using throughout the pandemic to kind of see what the predictions are, what the computer modeling expects to happen next. This is their best estimate of what the possibilities are that could happen. There's a potential that after the holidays, as Mr. Moore indicated, we will have an increase again because there'll be lots of gatherings that occur, but that's not necessarily the case. That right now, their expectation is that we will remain at a low rate, but this kind of gives the range of possibilities of things that might happen. I think those are all the slides I brought to talk about, but I'm happy to answer questions as is Chief.
I have a question. I'm reading that the European countries are starting to see a different spike again. And just curious, I know that we seem to follow that. So, is that a different protocol, I mean, a different virus? And is there a reason that they're receiving that and that we're not really projected to see that spike here?
Much of theirs, much of theirs, the vast majority, is also still the Delta variant. And many of those countries actually have a lower vaccination rate, uptake rate than we do right now, particularly here in Florida.
I ask, it's the Delta plus, though. It's actually a different variant.
There are three or four different that are all Delta variants. The differences between those are minor compared to being the next letter in the Greek alphabet variant. And so, the coverage, the expectation is somebody's been exposed to one that's within the same will have much more protection against the other ones that are within that same kind of variant, within the Delta umbrella.
Thank you. Chris, Chief, first, I wanted to thank you both. At the suggestion of my friend, the Vice Mayor, I visited the firehouse on West Atlantic Avenue last week, got my booster shot. It could not have been easier. Your men and women there were just spectacular. So, I encourage those in the audience or those watching. uh, so I encourage those in the audience or those watching in the internet world, uh, if you're looking for a booster shot or your first or second vaccine, uh, you're still doing it Tuesdays, nine to noon at the firehouse on West Atlantic Avenue, and then also, I was, uh, we received a request from the Lake Delray Apartments, uh, they have some seniors that I had previously helped out, uh, early part of the year, they, seniors needed their booster shot, so I, I contacted the City Manager's Office, our City Attorney, you guys, and the response is amazing, so I, I guess you have it set up, uh, Tuesday, November thirtieth, from ten to two, uh, another opportunity, but just, you guys have, have gone, your men and women, as well as both of you gentlemen, have gone out to just really be a big help in these, uh, difficult times when it comes to these vaccinations and whatnot, so for myself, thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy Vice Mayor, I'd also add, if I may, that if any other community organizations like that, or groups where they have a large population in an area, we'd be happy to, again, provide vaccination on-site to try to get as many people vaccinated or boosted as possible, I think we're gonna do almost two hundred, uh, two weeks from today at that Lake Delray.
When I was there, last, early part of the year, there was every bit of two hundred, if you told me four to five hundred, I believe you, the elderly, uh, people who just can't get mobile to do this, they really were at risk and they were so appreciative, and I'll, I'll definitely plan on stopping out then, thank you.
I want to also say thank you so much, I did my booster today, and I'm, I'm fine, and it was, I'm telling you, I didn't even feel it, and it was so easy, just driving through, right through the window, you know, easy peasy, fifteen minutes, and I was on my way, so thank you guys so much for providing that, and you have an opportunity of any of the three, um, uh, vaccines, so that's something that's important to, um, let everybody know, so it's not like it's just one, one, if somebody's looking for, uh, uh, you know, Moderna or the Pfizer, you've got them, so.
That's right, Ma, Madam Mayor, we have all three, and we've, uh, the CDC guidance, FDA guidance is that someone can choose to get the, another of the same shot they've had, or they can choose to get one of the other ones if they think they'd get better coverage for themselves, so we have all three.
Right, right.
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to also echo everything that's been said previously, so no sense in repeating, I would, however, like you to, if possible, bring back the chart that has the age.
That one?
No, oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes, that's the one. Um, I'd like to commend all of the senior citizens who, because of age and wisdom and everything else that goes along with knowing how to care for yourselves, uh, I commend all the senior citizens who are sixty-five plus, and then to follow up with the sixty to sixty-four, for all of the young people who have some trepidation as to why you shouldn't do it, remember you were not given permission when you were a little baby, and your mom and dad took you to your pediatrician or your clinic, and you were given a shot that you may have felt it, you may have screamed and yelled and whatever, but you got it. So, um, perhaps a little history as to why vaccines are vital, and all of the other, um, reasons and reasonings that are offered to me when I ask someone, and I am bold, I do ask, um, have you had your vaccine, and when they tell me no, I'm thinking about it, or I'm just waiting, I'm praying that I will be able to ask you again in two years, uh, exactly how you made it through. So thank you both, and thank all of the men and women who've been giving the vaccines and who have gone out to the community, not waited to have the community come to you, that's vital, I don't know what the other community is doing, but I'm praying and hoping that Delray Beach is leading the way as usual, thank you both.
And this is why we have eighty-eight point two percent vaccinated, see, um, Vice Mayor basically put it all out, and we appreciate everything you guys have done, did you want to speak, uh, to this at all?
Just, uh, just thank you, and we are very lucky, not only as a city, to have your leadership, but I will say, as a commission during these last two years, to have your leadership.
Without a doubt, and that's, and that's true, even from the very get-go, getting that, um, program where we had the information going out on a weekly basis, uh, three times a week, you guys were meeting and telling everybody what was going on in our town through our ability to be able to get the video messages out, you guys did a, a, a phenomenal job, so thank you for continuing that, you guys have been great in this whole deal, anything else? Thank you again.
Madam Mayor, so just to conclude, based on the epidemiology and statistical notes presentation offered, I'd like to give us an opportunity to conclude the holiday season before we make any direction with respect to mass reductions and other areas of comfort we may wish to offer at that time, initially, the thinking was to follow suit with Palm Beach County, however, given the trajectory of the holiday season, we'll give that an opportunity to be successful. Likewise, ladies and gentlemen, if the trajectory remains on track, this holiday season, we'll go from there.
Absolutely, I'm, I'm a hundred percent behind that, yep, anybody else? We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, all right, moving on to the second, uh, was it Missy Barletto?
Yeah.
Five A two, this is gonna be an update on, I believe, construction projects, right?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Uh, good afternoon, Missy Barletto, Public Works Director, um, this is our, our, uh, every meeting update on our active construction projects that are going on out in the community, this first slide should be super familiar to you now, this is how we communicate these projects with folks, um, and I'm just gonna jump right into it, so this week, we're looking at city, um, city-run construction projects, they're, um, the Atlantic Dunes Sewal Project is being done in the north parking lot at Atlantic Dunes Park, it will take approximately six months for us to complete that, we're two months into the project, so we still have a ways to go with this one. Um, also, Brant Drive Bridge is the complete replacement of the Brant Drive Bridge in the Tropic Palms neighborhood, that is an FDOT project, but they are, it's a complete bridge replacement, we have another, at least another year that people will have to drive around that area and not be able to utilize that bridge. George Bush Boulevard also is an FDOT managed project for the city, they're currently working on some utility, um, projects and relocates, there are intermittent road closures along George Bush Boulevard, west of the, the FEC railroad tracks. The new one that's added to the list for this week is the Northeast Third Avenue Streetscape, the construction on that project actually began yesterday, they started mobilizing to the site, the first thing that they're gonna be doing out there is replacing water lines and sanitary sewer lines, we don't expect to actually be breaking ground and interrupting traffic until November twenty-ninth, so that won't happen until after Thanksgiving. Osceola Park Phase One, the final lift of asphalt has been completed on the roadways, and we're working on clearing the alleyways, in the first phase of Osceola Park, we, um, we did, um, pervious concrete alleyways to, to work on some of our sustainability, um, attributes, in the second phase of, of Osceola Park neighborhood, we're going to be putting down turf block, so that will actually allow the grass to grow up between, we'll, instead of doing the, the street sweeper up and down the alleyways weekly, we'll be mowing the alleyways weekly still, but it will be turf block and people will be able to drive on it just as if it was a solid surface. So also, in, in Phase Two, we're working on, um, putting in some sanitary sewer improvements along Southeast Eighth Street, and there will be intermittent road closures that are associated with that. Public right-of-way improvements, I have this on here because we're doing a lot of sidewalk replacement and repair in the southwest neighborhood, it does not actually interrupt anything except pedestrian traffic, but it is still going on out there, in case people are curious about what that, what that activity is, um, we are in, also putting in our next phase of reclaimed water main, uh, reclaimed Area Ten is a, it's a directional bore construction, um, on southeast, northeast First Avenue, and there are intermittent, it will be intermittent road closures that are associated with that, when that happens, there will be flaggers present, and people will be still able to pass by, but they'll have to pause first. And then finally, the Southwest Fourth, Southwest Sixth, Southwest Seventh, and Southwest Third Court Project, which couldn't have a longer name, um, we are doing the final asphalt lift in those, um, those areas along that neighborhood, so there are, are rolling street closures that are associated with that, so they may start at one end of the roadway and, and block traffic in the morning, and then a couple hours later, they're blocking traffic two blocks farther up the road, that can be very confusing for residents, but, um, because of the way that the construction was done, you can drive on the asphalt after it's been put down relatively soon, so, and that is it.
Very good, well, let me ask you a question, um, why are we doing the block versus the pervious, uh, concrete, just curious as to how we, why we change that up?
So, it's kind of, um, it's an experiment, to be absolutely honest, the pervious concrete does allow for percolation into the, into the soil to meet our water quality and our, our stormwater needs, but there is more runoff from pervious concrete than there is from turf block. When we did the public outreach in the Osceola Park neighborhood, we actually had requests from particular neighbors asking for turf block instead of the pervious concrete, and we agreed to try it, the turf block will allow, um, more stormwater improvement and a more passive stormwater, um, system than having to have gutters and, and, uh, inlets and pipes.
It'll be interesting to see if we can maintain it, that's my biggest concern, is, you know, just making sure that we don't have them overgrown and, and whatnot.
Right, it's, they'll be on the, on a regular schedule for, for the, um, the alley mowing that, uh, we agreed with the CRA last year to stop trying to contract that out, they bought us a mower instead of paying for an annual contract, and we're putting it to good use.
Okay, great, and I'm so glad to hear about the update on the asphalt, final asphalt paving down in the southwest section, because we have received videos and things like that, that, uh, this is how we've been left, and, uh, obviously, it was not left that way.
No, it was not left that way.
Just haven't finished it, so, thank you for that update, anyone else?
Yes, I'd like to ask, I'd, not ask, but I will be so happy when I see Southwest Eighth Avenue on this, because unfortunately, that's the main entry into our, uh, city cemetery, so you have lots of, uh, traffic, unfortunately, and it's really not a good place to be, and so I'll just be so happy when I see this. Also, or to end it, I'd like to thank you, um, City Manager and Missy, for this update, because this is the kind of thing, uh, this kind of report, rather, that not only lets everyone know that work is being done, and just because you don't live in those particular neighborhoods, if you live in those neighborhoods, you know there's work, but for everyone else, this is an opportunity to say that the city is doing things that don't necessarily make the headlines, and I'm thankful for it, because this is another PR, that's a good PR, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you so much, Missy, thank you for the update.
Yes, ma'am.
And moving on to the quarterly financial report, this presentation is by City Manager.
And this is actually very brief, this is simply to advise the City Commission and the public at large, quite frankly, that quarterly financial reports, beginning in the early part of two thousand and twenty-two, will be a feature of City Commission meetings at the conclusion of each report. You all were recently provided the most recently quarterly report, and it was a solid outcome in that regard, and given the fact that both the Office of the City Manager, as well as the Department of Finance, experienced inquiries or questions regarding the state of affairs relative to financial and fiscal conditions of the city of Delray Beach, direction is being offered to make this part of our practice. So the first quarter of the current fiscal year concludes December thirty-first, the following report will be made publicly in addition to the documented version at the beginning of February, so one month after the conclusion of each quarterly report, a public presentation will be offered for both you as the City Commission Board of Directors and the public's benefit, so we look forward to making that part of our practice, and for the sake of transparency relative to fiscal affairs of the city, I think it's a step in the right direction, and the purpose this evening is to not only provide you all with an update to that direction, but this is also great, because it will serve as an opportunity to offer any advanced notifications relative to budget adjustments that might become necessary from a revenue or expenditure standpoint. So with that, ladies and gentlemen, that is my announcement, and I yield at this time.
All right, very good, thank you so much, any other, any questions? Nope?
I'd like to, I'd like to, once again, I'm gonna jump in front of Commissioner Cassell, because I know she's gonna have something to say about it, maybe, no, just another thank you, this is something that, please correct me if I'm wrong, I've been up here since March of twenty, April of twenty seventeen, I've never had this happen, so I think it's wonderful, I look forward to it, it's as if we don't just jump from October to August in our financial information, and if you're not drilling down into the data on your own, there are other things that distract you, this is an opportunity, once a quarter, to see where we are, so that nothing's a surprise, I thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good, anyone else? All right, thank you so much for that, and we're moving on now to the public, so if there's anybody in the public that would like to speak to a, um, item that is not one of our quasi-judicial or public hearing items, you can just state your name, your address, and you have three minutes.
Monterey Bennett, three-two-three Northwest Second Avenue, um, I know on Southwest Twelfth, one of the speed bumps is missing, I don't know if anyone's been out there to check it yet, in front of Village Academy, uh, there is a police there every morning, but I don't think he out there checking speed, uh, three on Southwest Eighth, it is traffic issues, it is traffic issues, because they're parked in the road where they are doing the sidewalk at, the trucks, and there are no flaggers, four, can we all work together for the greater good of all of God's children, uh, lastly, can we get the set flags back up, and not just the ones at Miss Wesley Park, my name is Monterey, and I'll complete.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a, of course, I have a deck coming up, hold on.
Okay.
I'm okay with this off?
Okay.
Well, while that's, here we go, all right, uh, first, you'll hear that phrase a lot in reference to the city of Delray Beach and the Atlantic JROTC Brigade frequently in this presentation, uh, thank you for the opportunity to update the Commission on the activities for veterans, uh, those who have served, the Home Front of Veterans of Deployed Troops, Atlantic JROTC, JROTC Brigade cadets, and residents of Delray Beach. Colonel, Cadet Colonel Crystal Assay presented to the Commission on September twenty-third about the ceremonies and events the Brigade has performed and planned to perform, she made these three requests, due to very busy high school schedules and cadet schedules, you got me, I'm Conrad Ogletree, the founder of Veterans and Home Front Voices, the program that the Atlantic Brigade and other high schools in Palm Beach County and in, uh, Broward, uh, are performing, uh, let me share with you what your support and funding has and will enable. Here we go, um, Delray Beach is the first, or among the first cities, to be recognized, to recognize veterans in each of these military, uh, eras on the day designated for that era. On October seventh, we recognize veterans who fought in and in support of the conflict in Afghanistan, another first for the Delray Beach community, there was nothing like that in all of South Florida. Both of these pictures are of home front spouses, we're trying to expand who we think of as serving this country. On the left is a home front spouse whose husband was deployed twenty-twenty December and just returned October fifteenth, on the right is a home front spouse, she's the, that's who we're honoring, is the woman there, because her husband deployed for, in December twenty-twenty, came back, uh, last week, and they have twins, six-year-old children, and she was the home front for them and for him. This was the image presented, the vision presented, uh, back in the, on the twenty-third, and this is the reality, we turned it in with the help of DDA, we were able to take and put banners across Atlantic Avenue by era, so that it fit, and it's the only city that has done anything like that, I think anywhere, but certainly in conjunction with JROTC. And then this is the result of it, we actually have parents, uh, vets and so on, that have, that have been a part of it now, so we're having the eightieth anniversary week, it is the eightieth anniversary of the Pearl, attack on Pearl Harbor, the cadets from Atlantic JROTC are going to lead that ceremony, it will be in Meisner Park, we're gonna have twenty-five veterans, and we have a specific set of requests, we need to keep finding veterans, and then we're gonna go and present with a hundred or more greeters to say thank you for your service. These are the days of recognition that we will be honoring across the calendar year, these are who's sponsoring it, and Mayor, you said it's- And Mayor, you said it's our first annual. We're going to have the second annual.
All right, very good.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, yes, sir.
Actually, I would simply like to advise the commission that of course, the city of Delray Beach, like most other municipalities, have a process to engage, to consider levels of support and that whole bit. So for the upcoming opportunity in 2022, staff will be more than happy to work with Mr. Ogletree's organization to proceed with that process. Given the fact that we have a budget in place and we have considerations in which we take under account. And likewise, when it makes sense to do so, we'll be happy to assist in any future review and consideration processes as it relates to that process. So considering the merits in this regard, we have to offer the sanctity respectably.
Absolutely. No problem. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. I'm Mavis Benson, resident, chair of the Merchants Association and am on the DDA board. And I'd like to say thank you for letting us be a part of the program that you just saw just now. It's season. Season's here. I know it because the snowbirds are all coming back and they're flocking to my store to find out what happened to the new stand. So I unfortunately get the news to, to tell them that Dick and Nancy retired and sold their building and life is good. But I'm seriously considering taking up, maybe offering a couple of newspapers to be able to offer. It may be another business.
There's a void.
It's needed, trust me. So we're here. It's season. I can't believe we're talking next week, Thanksgiving, then we're talking Friday and Saturday, Black Friday, Saturday, Shop Small. Have a great event going on for that, a great promotion. We started it last year with our ornaments. Last year it was made by our own Maruska Gato. If you didn't get one, you missed out. This year we have Jen Fisher has done the ornament. She's a local artist. I've got them all twisted up here. So when you come down and shop that Friday and Saturday, save your receipts. For every $200 in receipts, you get one of these collectible ornaments. After that, we have Hanukkah. Adam, do you have your menorah ready?
We have a big one that'll be out next Sunday.
Okay. If you needed a little one for the house, we've got them at Avalon Gallery. Stop by. So don't forget to shop small. Then you've got the menorah lighting. Then we have the tree lighting, which is a great community event for everybody to come down. It's all about family. It's all about creating memories. It's all about wandering throughout our downtown. It'll be a time for people to find out some of the new businesses that we have, see some of your old businesses and frequent them as well. I have less time than I thought I did. So we also have art and jazz coming up. In case you missed last one, we have another one coming up, December 22nd. So make certain to note that on your calendars. Lastly, I would just like to say thank you Commissioners for all that you've done to help our small businesses downtown. We're not out of the woods yet. We're still trying to regroup and make up for lost time. So you have a couple of things on the agenda tonight. If any appreciation or thought that you can give towards helping, thinking of the merchants as far as any parking east of the intracoastal. And you've got a letter that came from Laura Simon where we've asked about signage. If we could give any further consideration to maybe extending the A-frame signage for some of those merchants. When they say that it goes from a $20,000 a month to a $40,000 a month in difference, it makes, it's a big help. And we need to hang on a little bit longer, support them a little bit longer and help out any way we can. So I appreciate any and everything you can do for it.
Thank you, Mavis.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Sylvia Benars and I live at 2650 Lake Shore Drive in Riviera Beach. Hello, Mayor Petrollia and Commissioners. As I mentioned, my name is Sylvia and I'm the Vice President of Oceanside Beach Service. And I'm here because we're aware of a recent complaint that was made by Mr. Magdomi. And I'm just here to just clarify some things. So I just wanted to begin with, our intention is to bring our daily rate, which is what we call it in Delray Beach, just to the exact same rate as all the other locations that we currently serve in, in Palm Beach County. And also, we do have one location in Broward County. We'd begun this process officially the beginning of the month. We were informed by Parks and Recreation that in order for us to complete the process, that we should have gotten a consent from the City Manager, we immediately dropped our prices back down. And we did send a formal request to the City Manager regarding this increase. So in that period of time, I, it was a short period of time from the time that we started the increase and from the time that we stopped it with the, with the recommendation from the Parks and Rec Department. I would say we probably sold four memberships. And then separately, we do have our daily passes. So our daily passes, we probably had somewhere between 50 to 100 during that time. And that was at the additional rate of the $10. So we're just proposing not a, not a big increase. So that rate was a $10 increase. So it's, it's about 50 to 100. So, you know, basically, we'd be happy to donate, to compensate for that $1,500 to any nonprofit within the city of Delray Beach to account for that revenue. So as mentioned, we just began the price increase the beginning of November and it has been well received with, with no problem by all the guests that we do serve within Palm Beach County and also we do have one location in Broward. And I just want to point out, you know, as we mentioned that, we do serve those public beaches. And we did start the rate not too long ago. So all the other beaches are at that rate at $60 and there haven't been any issues. And we actually are considerably lower than the remaining locations within Broward and Dade. So for our daily package, which is two chairs, an umbrella or a cabana, as you know, we have the, the cabana hoods out in the winter time, with cushions and a table. And that rate is at 60 where our southern location, our southern, you know, district, not ours, but within the remaining locations that we don't serve, other people do. So Dade and Broward County, they're at 77. And they actually have two chairs and an umbrella. So no table, no cushion. So it doesn't sound like a lot, but it is extra product and it's an extra service. So I just wanted to wrap that up, that, you know, the, just, that's just the basic information. And, you know, we're very happy to be the continuing partner with you guys. And, you know, we stand by our product. We stand by our service. And if you have any questions, feel free to contact me. Thank you.
We've got some comments on that, but I think I'll hold them until the end. So. Well, I mean, maybe you want to, maybe we want to ask now.
Sure.
No, not, not with you.
Oh, not me. Okay.
Just speak with the City Manager, I think, unless you have.
Should I stay or?
I would stay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I find it very magnanimous of the, the organization to offer money to, other people's money to a charity. I don't think that that's really the route that I would take. I think that there is a refund due for people who have been overcharged. We, I don't really care what everybody's doing anywhere else. It's our city and our town and the price of the, that was, that was agreed upon by contract that this organization is to be sticking with. So this is not something that, just because somebody else is doing it differently, that we would, we would find ourselves to, to match those prices. And, and here's, here's the real reason why. What is it doing for the city of Delray Beach? Have we negotiated a different price in what we will be receiving from OBS? Is that part of the equation? These are things that I think that, Mr. Moore, you need to probably look into. But I think that there is, it's very important for us to understand how long this has been going on, who's been overcharged. And they should be receiving a refund from the, the very, you know, group that basically has taken upon themselves to go outside of the contract and the, and the means. They don't get to choose what they're charging the city, in the city of Delray Beach. The city of Delray Beach chooses. So those are my comments. I was going to bring this up at the end of the night, but since somebody, you know, started the ball rolling, I think it's probably appropriate. Commissioner Cassell.
And I was merely going to add, because I don't know what the amount would be. You're making an offer, but that doesn't equate to the amount of money that the people have been shortchanged presumably. So I think we need to, one, know what that number actually is. And second, if money is going anywhere, it should go in the beach fund, in my opinion, or to the city.
Well, I mean, somebody's paid something.
Well, no, or reimburse the individuals, not to a nonprofit.
Can I make a small suggestion?
Go ahead.
Can I do that? And I, I understand your point. So we do have, for, for the yearly memberships, and that, that's how we came up with that number, was that there were, that there were four with the increased rate. So for them, I can propose another option that I can give them the refund. But the $10 with the daily rate would be difficult because we don't have as much information with them as a yearly because they're, they're day trippers. They come here and there. And that's why we proposed the option of giving it to a nonprofit charity.
I, I don't understand how you guys could just arbitrarily raise the rates.
What she's saying is when the people go and plop down on a seat, they walk up and they'll take cash from them.
I understand what she's saying, but I don't understand how a vendor raises rates without the authority in their contract.
Right. We, we had a brief conversation with, I'm sorry, I haven't met you yet and welcome being on board with the, with the organization with Delray. We did have a brief conversation with De Jesus during COVID. Just the option of possibly increasing it. We haven't had an increase since 2018. So that, that was about three years ago since when the contract started. You know, it's, there, there is various reasons for it too. You know, equipment materials have skyrocketed 60%. Labor is 30% increase. So we just took in a few factors and we tested it out. We're still substantially less than our competitors.
Okay, so just timeout for a second.
So we do apologize. We, we should have absolutely.
Timeout for a second because you were given at least almost three quarters more chairs out there without increasing the bottom line to the city. And we gave that, and I think that that was in response to some of the COVID issues. So the whole thing about increasing prices to consumers who have no idea because there's no signs posted. I mean, I don't know what you're charging out there. That was reported to us, the amounts that you were charging. And I saw the little pamphlet that you guys send out that basically has the rates on it and they were not our rates. They were someone else's rates that you were charging in our town. So all of this other stuff about, you know, COVID, everything else, De Jesus, it doesn't matter. You have a contract with the city. The contract states that the only persons that can raise those rates is the City Manager.
Correct.
That was never done. So for you to have raised the rates on people who are unsuspecting is unacceptable to me. Unacceptable. You have breached a contract practically, I think.
Well, we, we have actually, there, there was an increase in the rate, in the rent to the city. You did make a mention that it was in proportion with the rate for, for what the city was getting. It is. So, I mean, that, it was just part of, that was just one factor.
Would be my suggestion.
But we do have a letter to the City Manager. We.
It would be my suggestion to put this on a forthcoming commission. This is too much to talk about. We don't have all the figures and facts in front of us. So I think that what you, we should do is we should have this discussion.
Is there consensus for this?
I'm sorry, I'm just playing, I'm playing catch up.
One, we're like during public comment and we're going back and forth. I didn't get.
This happened before, Commissioner.
Usually, usually we don't do it.
Yeah, I know. And, and listen, I wasn't going to.
I just follow your lead. So it's fine. I have no idea. I didn't get a complaint about this. The City Manager didn't bring this up to me. This is a first I'm hearing of this topic. So you raised the price for a month?
Less than that.
And then Parks and Rec reminded you that you can't do that without a City Manager approval. So you brought it right back.
We did. Immediately we said, we put a letter in.
Okay. And I guess, I mean, you could refund people if you had their information. You don't. But if you had any complaint from anyone, I'm sure you would refund them the $10. But otherwise, we're back to $50.
Correct. Yes.
Which is under the average rate in the tri-county, which I think is a good thing.
Yes.
Why don't we just move forward? I don't, what's the issue?
May I?
Yes, ma'am.
And then afterward, may I?
Thank you. Again, this is public comments. I will agree. We diverged, diverged, went off and started talking about it. I think there was something on the table about bringing this back as an agenda item. I think that would be appropriate. It appears that there is a lot of misunderstanding by your company as to what you can and cannot do. I don't know, maybe in the transition of the new City Manager, there's so much on everyone's plate. Maybe, I don't know your organization and how that could possibly have happened. You've apologized, but I do think it's something that needs to come back to us as an agenda item. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, what I'd like to do is to visit with leadership of Oceanside Beach Service to also include the Department of Parks and Recreation so that we can fully get our arms around where we are with respect to the contract provisions as well as rate considerations, as well as what can be accomplished to benefit the city of Delray Beach in its regard as a whole. We have two meetings coming up for the remainder of the calendar year, Tuesday, December 7th and Tuesday, December 14th. I'm very good analytical in terms of dates and coming up with a schedule, what works in terms of agenda items and so forth. But those dates are pretty solid in that regard. We will do our best. However, as part of tomorrow's executive leadership team meeting, direction will be offered to follow up with you and your colleagues of Oceanside Beach Service so that we can proceed accordingly and I will offer recommendations appropriately. And it's appropriate to engage with the City Commission to this effect because the outcome of this may be an updated contract consideration, which would necessitate an evaluation of the City Commission for their review and consideration as well. So I will proceed along those lines, ladies and gentlemen. I do not require consensus from you all to do so. I'm simply offering leadership and guidance to that effect, given the associated quackmire. So sometime tomorrow, if not the following day, we will be in touch with your organization, Oceanside Beach Service, to convene a meeting in the next couple of weeks so that we can get to a solid place. So.
Mr. City Manager, do, do we have a rate chart up at these sites at this stage?
I don't, as I understand it, and Commissioner Boylston, you mentioned that I haven't brought anything to anybody's attention because I have nothing to bring to y'all's attention other than perspective moving forward. So I'll get us all squared away as a result. In terms of any information at my immediate disposal, no. As I understand it, however, on the periphery, there had been posting of information at some point recently that was since retrieved, simply because no authorization had yet been granted. And prior to granting any authorization to that effect, it would be prudent on part of the Office of the City Manager, even Finance, Parks and Recreation, et cetera, to get us to where we need to be in terms of fiscal accountability. So I welcome the opportunity to proceed as I've outlined and I will advise the City Commission accordingly.
I think it's important to have a, a sign because it is part of the requirement in the contract, to have a sign that states what the rates are posted because nobody that's going down to the beach knows what those rates are. They would be relying on the very organization that decided to change those rates.
I apologize. I misunderstood you. I thought you were referring to the idea of the new rate structure as having been initiated.
No, I'm talking about a rate structure that is current. We need to have that down there and there should be a phone number on it in case somebody feels like they want to call because there's probably people who have been overcharged. They should, they should be able to call somebody to let us know. Otherwise, we do not know.
The Department of Recreation will, Parks and Recreation, I should say, will likewise work with you all in the meantime to reflect direction to that effect. Above and beyond that guidance, we will make arrangements for a meeting to take place soon and we will go from there.
Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
How's everyone? Thank you. My name is Terrance Johnson. I'm the new Executive Director at the Boys and Girls Club, Delray Beach. Real quick, just some of the things we have going on as far as the programs that we present to the youth in the community to just basically ensure that all young people, especially those who need us the most, are able to become productive, caring, responsible citizens. And we actually believe that since I've been at the club. I've been there for a month, coming from the school district, working as assistant principal, teacher, coach, and just working with a lot of kids that need a lot of attention as far as behavior goes. We've, we've changed the program around there. The system there is running really well. I feel like it's a place that the youth can come, be a part of and actually see a turnaround if they need it. So I've been partnering with the Police Chief, Mr., Mr. Police Chief Sims, Hunter and Mager. Police Chief Sims, um, Hunter, and, um, Maker, and, um, basically the schools that are basically filtering into our program, just reaching out to them, making sure that we're getting the kids that need, um, the attention. And, um, you know, we wanna, we wanna see, I guess you could say, grow into something that, that's gonna be productive in the community. So what we're just, basically just asking is that you guys support us, um, and we're here to, um, basically do whatever you need us to do. You need me to come over?
No, I just wish to provide you with my business card after your presentation.
So, yeah, so, um, that's what we have going on. Like I said, um, from the inside out as far as the appearance of the club, you know, we said all the way through as far as the program, the system that we have running now, the staff is doing a really good job. So it's a place where I say that, that the youth can be welcomed to and actually have a good experience. Um, with that being said, so.
Thank you, sir.
Before you go, sir, and as you're getting it, you may continue. I didn't pull my card out, but I'll be in touch. I would just like to thank you. This was very opportune.
Whenever you have a chance.
Very opportune, Mr. Johnson, that you're coming because we just, um, funeralized, buried, um, one of your biggest advocate, and he will be missed, um, General Secretary Colin Powell. And he was, he was here. And unfortunately, I missed it. I don't know where I was at the time. So I would hope that just because your greatest advocate is no longer with us, that you will hopefully carry on the tradition of service to the children. And I look forward to working very closely with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon and good evening. Laura Simon, Director of the Downtown Development Authority. Um, just quickly following up on Mavis's, um, comments regarding, yes, season is here and activities are coming back, which we are glad to see the report from the fire chief. And as far as our COVID tests and positive reinforcement there, because we are looking forward to welcoming everybody back downtown and, um, hosting a slew of festivities for the holiday season. So hope that we see everybody back throughout December, shopping and enjoying our beautiful new businesses that are here, as well as our old gems that we find throughout the entire city. Um, I also wanted to just follow up. I did send everyone an email this morning following up from our November 8th board meeting that was held, um, and discussion on the parking fees, uh, that were being recognized tonight as an increase on east of the inner coastal. And, um, we did also hold a merchant meeting on November 10th, and feedback from there is still to consideration that, um, we are a, a beautiful city that has, has an asset as our beach that brings, um, millions of people to our community. And we also have a line of retailers, small businesses along Atlantic Avenue, that are seeing an increase over a more shorter term, um, visitors that are coming in to shop because they can go other places and spend more time, um, and lunch and shop as well, because they don't have to, to pay for parking. So there are, there is feedback that is coming back that, um, anything that we can do to continue to, um, be welcoming city and not necessarily be comparable to others, but also be leading, maybe with inviting people for a lesser rate. Eighty-three percent of an increase on the rate, um, tonight is, if we go to $2.75 from $1.50 is, was a huge jump from our board. So looking at something more moderate, if that is even in consideration. But I did bring copies of the memo that I sent earlier, as well as, um, I can give you, just no one got to see that, because I did send it this morning. So, um, there's also just, we are seeing an influx of new businesses that are coming in, a lot of new development, a lot of new changes. And I know the developmental services team is working feverishly. And it has been brought forth. I know, uh, Commissioner Frankel has been bringing that forward to give more consideration to that department, but anything that we can do to enhance those services that can provide, because the influx is, is critical to our community and economic development, um, and the new types of services and businesses that are coming here, um, that we need to maybe look at how we can have considerations for those as well. Um, because there's a new change, new retail experiences, and where there's a lot of gray area. So if there's anything that we can maybe bring back in the future, uh, for discussions, we, we welcome that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Laura, let me ask you a question before you leave.
Yes.
Um, if, if there was a, a sizable increase along A1A, it's not with all of the, you know, businesses. Would that be a problem?
Well, consider it, then you have people that are gonna park on Atlantic Avenue to avoid the 275. You're also gonna have, what you're also gonna see in that, what we're seeing, there is a lack of parking, um, there's two things. There's a lack of parking east of the bridge, um, for the amount of traffic that goes to the beach. And if there is, we're seeing that influx into residential communities, right, into the residential neighborhoods, people are parking, trying to find parking, free parking. Um, we're also seeing people park at the, over the bridge and walking to the beach, but there's, we don't have a trolley service. So one of the also recommendations was to fund, take that parking fund and put it into, or meter fund and put it into designated, uh, enterprise fund for parking back into the district. That was, that is, that has been something that we've been talking about for a very long time. Um.
Okay, I'm, that's all. I just wanted to ask about that. Thank you very much.
Sure.
All right, very good. Anyone else? Sir.
Tyler Knight, uh, 10 Southeast First Avenue, Delray Beach, 33444. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I wanted to get some clarification. I came before the city commission on November 2nd, 2021. I was being processed under the old rules that applied at the time. The application was submitted. Due to delays, I was unable to be heard by your board until the new rules were in place. I was not allowed to provide a presentation at first reading, which is required under the old rules. Even though I was grandfathered in under the old rules, the new rules were applied to my application. I felt this matter should have been handled as every other application that was submitted prior to the change in the rules. I believe that the application of the new rules to my item was a procedural defect. I'm respectfully requesting commission to reconsider my item, and if so, that I'd be allowed to provide a presentation for my first hearing at the next city commission meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tyler. City attorney, have any comments on that procedurally?
Um, well, I mean, the, the rules are, that are in effect at the time that you hear the item, that's what governs. But if you do recall, we did mention to you, um, at the start of his item, that this was the last, um, item that fell with the old rules. So had he gotten before the change in the local rules, he would have been given the opportunity to, um, you know, make a presentation at first hearing. Um, had he come in after the local rules, he would have needed sponsorship. So you would have had some idea as to what he was requesting, um, as a text amendment. And at that point, you would have either sponsored him or basically given your input or, and not sponsored it. So, you know, I do understand what, what Mr. Knight is saying. Um, I do regret not telling staff and asking the commission for permission to allow him to make a first, um, first reading presentation, because I don't feel that you were given all the information had he been able to obtain a sponsorship on the item. It's really your call. You can move for reconsideration. I believe most of you, except Commissioner Frankel, were on the prevailing party side. Um, and again, it's no indication on how you're going to, um, you know, whether or not you're gonna move this to second reading, but at least he does get, you know, a fair shake, so to speak, uh, in presenting it to you and potentially, um, moving to second reading.
Yeah, I, and I, I brought this up, uh, to you afterwards. I just missed that, that that was a first reading and that we're supposed to approve the first reading so that they can get the actual opportunity to present. And then, of course, you filled me in on all the other additional elements. So I, I would move so that at least he gets his opportunity to present, as what we've all agreed is that we approve first readings, and that's a new process. So I, I would move to reconsider so that at least he gets his opportunity to present.
May I ask a question? Uh, he was aware, though, of, Tyler was aware when he came in, because technically he could have reached out to us all individually, uh, in preparation for the vote, because it does happen that if we don't agree on the first reading without any information, he doesn't carry forward. So.
What I've been finding is that applicants have been reaching out to me after the first vote, in between the one and the two.
So they're not aware that they need to?
Because it's kind of an, we, well, we've kind of automatically, without any discussion or anything, for all first readings, we just go motion to approve, and then we, we just go around because they're only gonna present for the second one. So most of my conversations have been with applicants after that, depending on scheduling.
Do you think that applicants are unaware of this situation?
In this case, no. Uh, Mr. Knight's attorney was, did contact the city. I think there was some confusion on Mr. Knight's part, not on the attorney's part, as to whether or not a vote would be taken. Um, I was in communication with Mr. Knight, and he was very surprised, um, because he did assume that it would automatically go to second reading. You know, in this case, because this was an older, and, and I will say this, the delay was caused because, as you recall, this, um, area was considered by you, um, with Ms. Miskell's project. So Tyler had to wait until you considered that before he could bring this forward. So that was the reason for the delay. It wasn't staff, and it wasn't him. It was really the other consideration that, um, preceded him. What I would say is, in, in, in the spirit of the way the rules were at the time that he submitted, I think that if you wanted to reconsider, we would put it on for a first reading, allow him to make a presentation, and at that point, you would consider whether or not to move it to second reading, because that's how it was on the old rules. I don't think that we should just move it to second reading.
I'm willing to do that in this instance, out of fairness. However, I think going forward, we need, need to make sure people understand that first reading, your project, can be eliminated.
I don't think it's an issue, and the reason is, is because the sponsorship is in place now. And so because of the sponsorship and the fact that they have to pitch it to you before that, you are aware of it. If they don't get the sponsorship, they can't go forward. If they get the sponsorship, they've heard your comments, and typically, you know, that should give an applicant some type of indication whether or not they have the votes to move this forward and whether or not they were even gonna pay the fee. So I, I don't see that as being as an issue. But I will say that staff did inform Mr. Knight's attorney as to the process. So I don't think there was any, um, any mistake on the part of staff.
Huh, I made a motion for reconsider.
Yeah, there's a motion. Is there a second for reconsideration?
I'll second that motion.
And just to be clear, the reconsideration is to place this matter back as a first read, the next meeting.
First reading, and have a chance to present. You know, I, I guess in, in the, in the, in the, just because it, the process was different than what would have happened had it been 100% in that first, you know, iteration and not what we've changed it to. I'll agree to this, but I mean, and I, I don't want, you know, this to be now a changing of things. This is gonna be what was presented, and now we're, we're not gonna have a whole new, um, presentation. In other words, what I'm asking is that, are we going to see what was put before us, or are we going to see something that's now very different to?
Nothing is gonna change.
Okay.
Whatever the ordinance was at the time that it was last week is what it's, or two weeks ago, is what's gonna be presented to you.
All right, so, yes, ma'am?
Yes, I have a question. Do we have any idea if there are others in the pipeline?
There are none. This was the last one.
This was the last one. Okay.
Thank you.
So we've got a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Boylston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Any other comments? Seeing none. Public comment is closed. Moving to the consent agenda. We have an amended consent agenda. If somebody would like to make a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Boylston?
Yes.
Moving on to 7AA, which was originally 6H2. Um, the vice mayor pulled this off. This has to do with the shade structure at Pompe Park.
Yes, and I apologize. Oh, I'm sorry. Can I speak?
Yep, you're up.
I apologize for not having the right, uh, numeration for the item. It changed from my notes. And anyhow, uh, 6H. And Sam, I'm sorry I didn't get an opportunity to speak with you, but I did speak with the city manager, and I'm sure he informed you, um, of my concern. We are about to spend close to, if not over, $26 million, and that's the figure as of today. And I'm hoping that it's gonna be tomorrow as opposed to five years from now. And when I saw the amount of funds that we were going to expend on something that's gonna be temporary without even possibly understanding, I understand that, uh, the shade is gonna be put up now. It's not necessary, but once we start construction, it's going to be necessary. My question is, just in case, it's gonna be five years from now, if we don't need to expend $100, what did I say, $110,000, is it possible that we can wait until we're closer to understanding that we will be spending that amount, well, we will be needing the shading? Is that unreasonable, the question?
Sam?
Good afternoon again. Sam Mettatt, Director of Parks and Recreation. Um, yeah, this item was, uh, one of our CIP projects that we looked at during the, uh, budget review process. Um, this comes from the Recreation Impact Fee Account. And what we're looking at is exactly what you said, is a shade structure over that playground as we've moved, um, we've taken a very systematic approach of playground, new playgrounds and then shade, and new playgrounds and shade, and touching each area of the city that, um, we all know didn't have shade over their playgrounds for a number of years. Um, and you're right, we're looking at that large project, but we're also looking at the way the building will work in a phasing approach, and that this shade could provide some comfort to the participants on that shade, on that playground for a few years before that project, and then possibly be relocated to another playground at another location, uh, after that project. So it kind of takes both of those into account.
I like the way that you said possibly, um, $110,000 is quite a bit of money, and I do know where that playground is, and it's very shaded. I wish we could save the trees, but I have no doubt that they're gonna be gone. But until we need it, need it, I question spending $110,000. That was my concern.
Are there any other, any questions I can answer?
May I, for clarification, because I'm not exactly sure where that structure is going. Is it needed to provide shade for the children that are using the playground currently?
Yes.
Okay, then, Ms. Johnson, it, he could potentially reuse it.
I know where the playground is, and I question, I don't know what part of the playground is in the sun. Uh, it's rather shaded in that area. I, where would you put it? And since we don't have any photographs to, I, I haven't been there recently unless you've removed some shading, it's quite under the shade. And even on the western sunset, the playground is not in the sun.
To your point, there is a large tree there that does provide some shade. Typically, it's hit or miss where that shade actually falls on your playground area, whereas the center, larger, what we would, in this call a mega span, would cover it a lot more and more evenly throughout the playground throughout the day.
I, I had some similar questions when I was going through the review. If you recall, I was asking about whether or not this was a right thing to do at this point in time, um, given that we're gonna be doing a major renovation. And I was also, um, the, the same answers came forward. And by the way, the structure isn't something that is, um, gonna be destroyed, um, once we start digging up and moving things around. It actually will be preserved and can, can be reused again. So.
Is it possible that it's not even gonna be large enough? Because if they're gonna move it away from the trees, I don't know the size. I wasn't given any size photos. Um, unless I missed it, I would apologize if I did. We might need something entirely larger, or, I don't know. I just, I don't see the justification of doing it now. And you need a little vitamin D.
I, I don't think he means that we'll, we'll just have the opportunity to move it on-site.
Right.
We'll be able to move it to cover any of our many uncovered
Right.
playgrounds across the city. Is that correct?
In other words.
That, that's what I was referring to. I was letting you finish, but, but yes, we have some smaller playground. This is actually a very large playground. Um, so this is a large, uh, so it gives us the option to put it over a number of our other playgrounds throughout the city that, like you said, do not have shade.
I don't really know that because you told me.
I know that we always need shade for the kids. That's the way I see it. I'm okay with it, um, with respect to, um, offering the shade there for the time being. And then in the event that we're, you know, changing things around and you can move it to another site, that we're not losing $110,000, as the vice mayor says, uh, I'm okay with that. And, and then potentially having to put a larger shade structure for whatever we are gonna be doing over at Pompe Park. So just as long as we keep that in mind, that we're not creating something that doesn't, um, have a purpose beyond, you know, a, a short period of time. Anyone else?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll, please. Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Boylston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Okay, moving on to the regular agenda. We have resolution 159-21. This is quasi judicial. No, I'm sorry. Yes, there, it is. I apologize. I didn't do my due diligence at the beginning here. So this is a quasi judicial hearing, so I'm gonna read the quasi judicial rules into the, into the record. This hearing shall be conducted in accordance with quasi judicial rules. The applicant in the city shall be permitted to present their case. The public shall be allowed to speak for three minutes each, or a maximum of six minutes if the person represents an organization or a group of people who are present, but agree not to speak. The city commission, staff, and the applicant will be allowed to cross-examine the witness. The city or the applicant will The city or the applicant will be allowed to offer rebuttal testimony. The decision to approve or deny an application or appeal may not legally be made upon personal views as to whether a project is a good project or not, nor may a decision be based on numbers of citizens who have support or opposed a particular project. The law requires that all decisions must be made on the basis of whether the project meets the required requirements of law, the comprehensive plan, and the land development regulations. At this point, we're going to swear in anybody who is going to be bearing witness to Resolution 159-21. Please stand and be sworn in.
By the authority vested in me as a notary of the state of Florida, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay, very good. And we have ex parte communications by the commission. So is there any ex parte? None?
None.
You have any ex parte communication? No? Okay, tell me which project this is. Is this the 200 North?
222 North Ocean Boulevard.
Okay, so I believe I have ex parte communication with, I believe, the applicant. Okay.
Okay.
And city staff, you'll enter the project into the file?
Hi.
File into the record, I'm sorry.
Anthea Giniotis, Development Services Director, and I'd like to enter file number 2021-183 into the record. And Mr. Bernardo is here with a presentation on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. Before you is Resolution 159-21, which is the abandonment of a general utility easement located at 222 North Ocean Boulevard.
And state your name, sir.
Christopher Bernardo on behalf of the applicant, I'm sorry. So the proposed resolution calls for the vacate and abandon all interest the city has in the platted general utility easement located at 222 North Ocean Boulevard. The site at issue here is located north, three tenths of a mile north of Atlantic Avenue, along North Ocean Boulevard. It is in between Thomas Street and Vista Del Mar Drive North, located in the R1AA single-family zoning district. The site is a single-family residence. You have the Dorchester cooperative to the south, the single-family residences to the north and to the west. The easement at consideration, though, however, has no relation to any other property. This easement is contained wholly within the lot that is owned here at 222 North Ocean Boulevard, which again is a single-family residence. The easement is 305 feet by 12 feet. It extends out from North Ocean Boulevard on the east. But as you can see from the illustration, it has no apparent destination on the west end. It has no source. There are no facilities located at any point along the easement, and there are no utilities whatsoever in the easement at all. That has been verified from all utility providers, including verified by the city of Delray Beach. This is a visual of the site. Again, this is contained within the single-family lot. This is a single owner of that lot. Practically and physically speaking, there wouldn't even be the ability to have the access to any of those utilities. There's a wall. Again, this is private property and it extends and stops out into that picture. You'll see the easement simply stops in the middle of that residential lot. So why is it easement there? The easement was created by, and dedicated at the plat of Ocean Cave Delray, which was a 1984 plat. The, it was dedicated in perpetuity for the construction and maintenance of utilities. Again, you know, we did have discussion with the city engineer about why that was even there and it's all conjecture possibly. There was a consideration of some sort of structure or something out there, but again, currently it has no practical or actual physical use to the property. There is no current or apparent future use for that easement. Again, these are the city's notices and consents contained from all utility providers that have verified that those forms by the city verify both that they have no utilities at the location and have no future planned use for the utility. So each provider does their analysis of the utility if there is a use. And again, all relevant utility providers, including the city, had confirmed that there's no prospective or current use for the easement. So the findings this commission has to make under LDR 246 is that prior to your granting of this abandonment, the city commission must make a finding that the abandonment will not result in the detriment for the provision of utility services to adjacent properties or the general area. And again, just to go back to this, practically, physically, and legally speaking, again, the easement does, has no apparent source. So there certainly is no detriment for the provision of utility services to anyone adjacent or to the general area. The applicant is the agent on behalf of the property owner. He has no current or prospective use for it, and in fact, it rather only serves as an encumbrance on that land. There are no, again, there are no utilities within the easement. So again, the requested action by the commission is that the finding that the abandonment will not result in detriment for the provision of utility services to adjacent properties or the general area. And the proposed resolution does ask to, that the city approve to vacate and abandon all of the city's interest in that platted general utility easement located at the site. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Stell? Anthea?
Hello, Anthea Giniotis. I have a presentation, but I don't actually think that we need it. This is a fairly straightforward matter, and I think that you've been given a good overview by the applicant. Ultimately, just a couple of confirmations for the record was that we do have confirmation from the utility providers and they have confirmed that there are no existing or planned utilities needed within the area. And we've also just reviewed aerial photography going back to 2008. There doesn't appear to have ever been above-ground utilities within this easement. So it, you know, based on the analysis that we have and a recommendation by the city engineer to approve the request, which is required under LDR Section 246N, that the abandonment will not result in a detriment for the provision of utility services to adjacent properties or the general area, based on staff's analysis. And that is ultimately the finding that you have before you today. So I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you.
All right, so it is a quasi judicial hearing and we're going to invite anybody who would like to speak to Resolution 159-21 from the public. We'd have an opportunity to do so now. Seeing no one moving, public comment is closed. We're going to move it to asking if there is any cross-examination by either the, no, the staff or, okay, you got it. And no rebuttal testimony, obviously. Thank you so much. So to the board. Ma'am?
I'll support this. Typically, when we see these abandonment requests, there are utilities or there's a future need for utilities, and then there's a letter from an engineer saying we shouldn't do it. In this case, you have none of that, so I support your request.
Thank you.
I just have one question. Who's maintaining the property now? It looked well taken care of.
The property is owned by a single, single property owner. That's his private property. So all the pictures you saw is within his own backyard and side yard.
And Anthea answered, who has, who has the letters, letters of consent from the utilities? So they're in city records?
Yes, the other file that was entered into the record.
Yes, I'm in, I will be in support of the request.
Mr. Bolston, anything? Okay, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Resolution Number 159-21.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to 7B, ratification of emergency regulations.
We're ready to approve.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Cassell?
Thank you, good luck. Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to 7C, reconsideration of the dog sculpture. This would be Duncan.
It's going to be a good one.
Yes, good evening, mayor, vice mayor, deputy vice mayor, commissioners. Duncan DeVries, Assistant City Manager. Kateri, do you have a? So we're missing the presentation. I was hoping to remind you of what the dog sculpture actually looked like in case you hadn't seen it, but if you'd just give me one second. Sorry about that. Well, Kateri's looking for it. So at the request of the commission, we're returning with this dog sculpture for your consideration. At the time that I presented it to you, I gave you information that was relayed to me that may not have been true. Based on Commissioner Cassell's request, I did reach out to the law firm that was there. I guess at about the same time that he was reaching out to all of you to object to have the sculpture in front of his firm. So, you know, based on that knowledge, I did talk to the city attorney and the city manager about what are the next steps because obviously we don't want somebody irate at having a sculpture that they have to look at. So with Vice Mayor Johnson's suggestion, this is back for your consideration. I did reach out to Pineapple Grove because I was actually hoping that maybe they would do, give the donation to the city and then the city could decide the appropriate spot for it. Maybe outside of Pineapple Grove if other businesses end up objecting to it. The condition, though, with the donation is that it remain in Pineapple Grove. So I don't have an exact location for you tonight. The request was, do you accept the donation? And then allow for us to go out and find a better location and canvass the businesses? I do have a caveat that, you know, there is more residential units in that neighborhood, so it would be hard to canvass all of the residents in some of the apartment buildings where this might be located. But the businesses is relatively easy. And just keep going until we find an appropriate spot, if it's the will of the commission.
Duncan, the area that is along, let's see, like Third and Third, is that area also considered a consideration?
It could be, yes, definitely.
I'd be okay with accepting it and moving it to where it would be acceptable to those around it. I know that it's a, it's a dog sculpture that, you know, there's a lot of people who walk their dogs in that area coming from the places that are the residential area right there that is to the south of Third and Third. So, I mean, to me, if there is no pushback on, you know, where it could be, we could maybe move the art into some of the other areas instead of just along the Third Avenue area. Or Second Avenue, I'm sorry.
Second.
Anyone else?
No, I'm in favor of having it, you know, somewhere, finding it a home in Pineapple Grove Arts District. There's sculptures throughout the entire arts district. And I think when you live or you own a business in that district, you know that there is going to be art. But I'm glad we're able to take the opinion of the business where we were going to put it right outside his front door. I think that was a nice neighborly thing to do. So yeah, I would like to accept it and hopefully we find it a good home.
Commissioner, did anybody, Vice Mayor?
No, I'm in agreement with that.
I think this might be a great opportunity to maybe take a pause and just kind of understand exactly what we accept. I mean, everyone has a different outlook and view as to what is art. I expect a little bit more from our advisory board on art and it just seems to be a pass-through. Everything that comes to them comes straight to us. So I'm just wondering exactly what they're doing and what we're expecting them to do for us. I'm beginning to also wonder if we have saturated Northeast Second to the point where, where are we going to put one more statute? And art is in the eyes of the beholder. And I appreciate the gentleman for stepping up and standing up because it's his business. He's been there quite a while and I appreciate the fact that he was willing to come forward and be honest about it. A lot of our businesses fear if they're on Second, that if they say no, they're going to be blackballed or ostracized or whatever because they don't buy into what might to us be acceptable, but might not be to them. So I don't know what the answer is. I don't want to be considered the anti-artistic commissioner sitting up here. Everything that we consider beautiful may not be considered beautiful. So before we contemplate where we're going to put it, I even reached out to Renee to see if there was someplace next to the arts garage, arts warehouse.
Yes, right.
Beg your pardon.
That's what I was suggesting.
Yeah, but I thought you were more towards the neighborhood.
Well, I mean, it's right up there with the, with Third and Third meet and then there's the alley, the artist's alley, which is right by the, you know, that area doesn't really have a lot of art and yet it's still a part of, I believe, the arts district is.
You said Third and Third. I think you mean Beartre, Beartre, on Fourth?
No, Third and Third.
Oh, Third.
Like where the arts warehouse is, you know, we don't really have a strong presence there with the exception of the artist that does the work, but that's on his property. Yeah, and that's on his property. So it's going to be, we're going to have that gone and so there's going to really be nothing there.
And a lot of people don't know that Fourth is in Pineapple Grove Arts District as well. Doesn't feel like it, but it's a whole nother street that doesn't have a lot of art. So I think we do have a lot of, a lot of room. And I'll mention that most of the businesses in Pineapple Grove are very much involved with Pineapple Grove Arts District as you go down the district. They don't fear Pineapple Grove Arts District. Matter of fact, there's banners all down Pineapple Grove Arts District. I think it says, "We are Pineapple Grove." And it's, those are all businesses. There are actually not a lot of artists up there. There's a lot of realtors up there, there's a lot of attorneys up there. So it's a really tight-knit community. So I just, you know, want to point that out. And art like this only makes it to us when it's approved by our art board. We don't see the ones that they turn down. They don't come to us, right? We only see the ones that they approve. So I think they're doing a fantastic job of filtering that. And a motion to approve.
So you're saying, may I?
Hey, we have a motion. Can we get a second? Okay.
Okay, sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry. So you're saying that this came through our advisory board? It was not something that came from the artists and it's just donated and they just passed it through?
Well, they have to, they have to accept it and recommend it to come to us for final approval.
Is that the way it is? Okay. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing done. Call the roll.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
And stay tight there. Don't go anywhere.
Only turning the page.
7D, Hope Statue.
So Hope by Jeff Wyman. You've actually seen this a number of times because it came before you, I believe, back in June. Pineapple Grove approached the city about two sculptures. One, Shy Dancer, which actually went on a different path and you approved purchase of it and it has been installed. And Hope was the other sculpture. At the time, it was requested by the commission to return with the parameters of some sort of agreement because it wasn't quite sure if it was going to be a flat-out donation or whether it was going to be a loan. And what would that loan entail and who would be responsible for the maintenance, et cetera. Since it left the commission, that process fell apart and that's why Shy Dancer went a different route because that was actually owned by Jeff Wyman. Hope is owned by a private individual who, with Pineapple Grove, withdrew their intention of loan slash donation. Since then, the private individual would like to revisit donating this directly to the city without the Pineapple Grove involvement, which means that if the city accepts, if you accept this donation of a statue, that it can go anywhere in the city. It does not have to remain in Pineapple Grove, although it could. So Hope is before you. It is one of those statues that was previously approved by the Public Arts Advisory Board in either a loan or donation status. They felt it was, you know, important enough to approve that and move on to your consideration. So this is back before you as a donation by Mr. Minkin for your acceptance or denial and hopefully a suggestion on place. Again, we don't have an exact place, but if you can go to the next slide. Kateri, for me, please. Appreciate it. Can I do it here? There we go. Oh, too far. So I went around with Jeff the other day trying to look for, for appropriate places and I have talked to Sam Metot, the Parks and Rec Director, about possible and I have talked to Sam Metot, the Parks and Rec Director, about possible park locations. She may not fit every location, right? So, these were sort of possibilities where we thought she would fit without drawing too much attention, but being a part of, of the landscape, if you will, and complementing the existing environment in those locations. So, I don't know if the commission, first of all, we'll need direction on whether to accept the donation, and then if you have any input on, on where you would like to see Hope installed.
Other que, may I ask?
Sure, absolutely.
Why, how much of Mr. Wyman's work do we have in the city?
So, we, it seems like a lot, because his studio is there, but, but we only have two. There is one on-
Really in close proximity, they can be seen from each other. They're both on Second Avenue, and the newest one that we just installed was the Shy Dancer. And just down the, just a little further north, we have the, the bird.
It's a, it's a tree and a bird.
Tree and a bird, so that's it. Those are the two. And if we are going to accept this, I'm in line with you. I think we, another location would be better, because too much of one thing becomes, you know, not, not necessarily what I'd be looking for. So, I, I mean, if we're going to, as a, you know, a commission accept it, I think one of these alternative sites would be better. My only question is, is that, is this something that would deteriorate rust due to the heavy salt air at Sandaway, or one of these other places? Is it better to be, you know, inland? So, that would be the question that I have with respect to, because that could X out a lot, you know, several of these places.
So, maintenance is always an issue with these accepted donations, you know, it falls unfortunately on, on Missy's team, usually, Public Works. And I do apologize, I'm just noticing that Mangrove Park is by the boar launch, and it's actually a boat launch, so correcting that for the record. Jeff is convinced that his sculptures are made to withstand all sorts of weather. Maybe it will require painting more than others. I, I really don't have a definitive answer on that, but, well, I did talk about that with Jeff. You know, I, I think he's of the mind that it can withstand anything, so.
Could I ask one more question?
Yes, absolutely.
Um, I'm sorry, forgive me if I misunderstood. You indicated that he had, he was originally going to donate this to Pineapple Grove.
So, Mr. Minkin, who owns it, was originally going to donate it to Pineapple Grove, and Pineapple Grove wasn't sure at the time, when it came before you, whether they would then donate it to the city, or just create a loan, some sort of loan agreement, where it would be displayed in Pineapple Grove, but owned by them and not the city.
Is that possible? Is that possible, that they can display something on city property without our approval, or?
Well, we would accept it. It wouldn't be that they would just-
It said a loan.
Right, but what I'm saying is, is that it would have been a loan to them through, basically, we would be the one to make that final decision as to where they could put it.
So, we would still have some say as to where and when.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But that, that fell through, all the, the talks with the city fell through on that. So, before you, it's, if you want to look at it as a almost completely different item, this is Mr. Minkin coming to you. Pineapple Grove does know that he's before you tonight, there were no objections. You know, he had nothing in writing to donate it to Pineapple Grove, and the fact that they weren't sure whether they wanted to loan it or donate it, you know, again, this is between the city and Mr. Minkin. Mr. Wyman is a conduit for this request, and-
So, do we know if it's a loan, or they've-
No, this is, this is a donation.
Donation now, okay. I just like to say, it would have been nice, for me, if I had a better picture of where you exactly wanted to put it. Sandaway Park, Mangrove Park, I don't quite know exactly where those are. I do know, because I was at the dedication of the new marina, so I imagine it's there with the, with the benches, et cetera, which is at the north end of the marina.
So, there seems to be a natural spot at, at the marina that is in the northeast corner, that wouldn't face too many residences, because obviously, you know, I think if you put a noticeable sculpture, we may get, you know, some feedback from some of those residences, and-
My question would be, you just said something that's very key. We have not, with that particular site, talked to anyone in that community to say, what are your objections, et cetera? The same, I would say, with, I presume Cornell Park is in front of the Cornell Museum?
No, that's actually down in Lake Ida area, right, Cornell?
Little Pocket Park.
Yeah, it's a little Pocket Park.
Pocket Park near, somewhere, wherever.
Oh, gosh, is it nice?
And so, Cornell and Del Ida are more passive parks, so-
But it's still within a residential community, neighborhood, totally. So, you would have to get some, I would hope that the city would get some kind of buy-in.
So, I just want to jump in here. So, for me, I think there's, there's a few unknowns, you know, with this, with this statue. So, one, we already, we already approved Mr., a statue by this artist. Second one to be added into Pineapple Grove, which, by the way, I saw today, it looks, it looks fantastic. We don't know where this one is even going. And there, there's a, there's a term that downtowns try to steer clear of, which is called plop art. You don't really have a space for it or a purpose for it. Arts districts have a purpose for it, but just to accept this piece of art, which is beautiful, and then say, hey, find a place for it, I don't really feel like that is the right, really, truly, the right process. And so, what I would suggest is maybe putting off this decision, maybe even giving Mr. Minkin an opportunity to speak with some private organizations, you know, maybe this ends up on private property, with either, you know, a nonprofit business or other organization to explore that, and before coming back with staff, with maybe some strong recommendations of where it really could go. But I don't know if I could approve it, and then just say, find a place for it. I don't really think that's a proper process for art.
Well, I take a little different approach, only because of the fact that I think that our art board, for the most part, wasn't really included in this process, and we are not looking at putting it in the arts district. So, it really is kind of like pushed, put on us as to whether or not to accept or reject it. So, I don't like the idea of plop art either, and I think that that, I think that there is some truth, you know, to, behind what Mr. Bolson is saying, and, and I, and I respect it. But I think that there are quite a few places on this list that make sense to have some art, because our city is art-oriented. It's like it's, we're moving into more murals, we've got them all over the city now. We don't have a lot of art in different areas, and you've named some of these areas that basically, a piece like this might really kind of give it a little different feel, like the, the SOC building, or the marina. That's what I was thinking, it might be a really cool place for it. But again, I think that we're going to need the buy-in from the public, and I don't know if we accept tonight, that then we don't get that opportunity to do a buy-in, and so therefore, it would really kind of almost like go to one of the areas where we wouldn't have to worry about the, the buy-in of the public, or if we can actually see what the temperature is in some of the areas that look like it could fit, and then make the decision. What would your thoughts be on that, Duncan?
I, I think buy-in is essential, especially if someone's going to be looking at it. You know, one of the things I, I discussed with the Public Arts Board is that they had an idea for a second sound wall mural, but, you know, I, I really had them evaluate the spot that they had chosen, because it was opposite three or four houses, and it was a very tight space, and I thought, you know, from a public art perspective, there wouldn't be much benefit, except if those three houses really wanted to look at that mural from their living room window, right?
Right.
So, they, they kind of backed away from that. The Public Art Advisory Board did like accepting this sculpture. They haven't weighed in on location, so maybe I can go back and talk to them about, you know, their thoughts on a location. I think when you get into residential neighborhood and getting a buy-in, that becomes more problematic, because you're going to miss somebody.
Yep, I understand.
You know, it's a matter of knocking on doors, and whether they answer the door, and I don't know if you'd reach everyone or get a consensus. You know, what does a consensus mean in a residential neighborhood? You know, it's, it's problematic.
Anything else? I mean, does it-
I think a consensus means they do or do not like it for all that you query. I'm, we're, first of all, going to decide if we're going to accept it.
Right.
And so, I'm ready for that question.
Okay, is there any other questions before we go to the-
Would it, could we do what we could, maybe, should we put it off until there is a specific location?
I thought I was going to make a-
And a discussion on it? Because I'm in agreement with everybody, taking it and then having no place, and then looking to plop it down somewhere, not taking it. I don't know if I'm ready to not take it, but I'm not ready to take it and have no location for it. So, it would be great if maybe you could come back with specific locations, and-
And the fear was, if we came back with one location-
No, 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 right.
And you don't like the statue, and that's why, thought process was to provide you a few options where we-
Right.
-evaluated the situation, but we can narrow the list, definitely.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
And I, and I don't even know the size of it, it could not, it might not fit.
So, it is tall. She's, the other thing I, I should have mentioned in the, in the cover memo, she's nine feet.
Right.
Just from toe to head, and then she's got a bit of a span there with the-
Yes, she does. So, basically, we want to make sure that wherever it's going would fit in that spot, and not be, she wouldn't be swallowed, but she wouldn't also be overpowering.
Correct.
So, you want to kind of make sure that that, you know, would work. I, I'm in agreement, so do we want to go ahead and make a motion to that fact?
I have-
Me? Oh, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
Just have one question. The picture, the photograph, there's a bird at the end, so that includes it, and is that a heart, on the other hand?
There is a red heart on the other end.
I don't think that we also discuss the safety of some of these art pieces. I tried to discuss it before with, what was the other one?
It was the Shy Dancer.
Shy Dancer.
I don't think we discussed it, and we open ourselves up for all kinds of liability-
Right.
-when we accept these artistic pieces that are just out in the public.
Right.
I just see it, not-
Right, no, and let me tell you, I was just, I was down at the Shy Dancer today, today, and the edges are not sharp at all.
Right.
They're, they're, they're very rounded, and they're, you can't cut yourself. I was worried about that, because looking at this, it looks like it would be very sharp, and it would be very, you know, it could hurt somebody or injure somebody. And the location that, where it was placed, is perfect. It's not in a, in a walking area. It's, it's nicely balanced between some, some foliage on both sides, so it doesn't really kind of push itself towards people wanting to get past that. It, it actually is a-
Tell me exactly where it is.
It's on Second Avenue-
Right outside the new-
Between, yep, in Pineapple Grove, between northwest Second and Third Streets. It'll be on the-
On the west side?
On the west side, yes. It's right across from the, if you will, the, the New Ray.
The Ray, okay.
And it's right next to the frozen custard place.
Yeah, there's a custard shop right there.
Right.
So, go see it, and then you can feel it too, and I'm telling you, I, I was worried about that as well.
I was just very, very concerned about the safety.
The, the edges are more rounded than it comes across in the photo.
That's correct.
Definitely.
Have you seen the heart? Because it looks as if it's a Charles height. It's a pointed area. I, pointy.
Yeah. Again, I think that what, what you would want to do is just make sure wherever that is, it would not be where people are walking.
Is it at Mr. White's location?
It, it is, at Mr. Wyman's location.
Wyman's, sorry.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, do we need to vote on this? It's a discussion, do we need to know?
I'm just going to make a motion.
We're just going to-
I make a motion that staff identifies a location for this piece of art, and then it goes back in front of the Public Art Advisory Board with said location. Therefore, it would have to come back in front of us, if they approve or deny it.
We have a second?
If they approve it.
Second.
Okay, so, call the roll, please.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Petolia.
Yes.
Mr. Frankel.
Yes.
Ms. Casal.
Yes.
Mr. Bolson.
Yes.
Great, stay tuned.
All right, sounds good. All right, resolution 181-21.
Well, Missy's coming up. I had a question. I thought the chair and this board wanted this removed, or deferred, I should say, because they were still looking at it, because there was some information, a conversation I had with, I believe he's the chair, that differs from what's in the backup.
I believe it's Mr. Halliburton. He did, he did send an email as the chair, but I don't believe that the, the board voted on it. So, you know, there is, there's a bit of a nuance. You know, he is the chair, so he can send you an email, but to represent that it's the board's will, I, I don't think that was accurate.
Okay. Thanks for the explanation.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Missy Barletto, Public Works Director. Tonight, we're bringing you a discussion on beach area parking considerations. Annually, we look at all of the parking rates in South Florida, we compare what those rates are to the rates that we are charging. The city of Delray Beach has, has the lowest beach area parking rates of the communities that we surveyed. Many of them do not have parking right along A1A. Some of them are, you'll see on here, there are a couple of communities that have a $1 parking fee. Those are for lots that are, are a distance away from the beach area. So, we took this, this annual rate survey to our advisory boards. We went to the Parking Management Advisory Board on October 26th. They had, had a good deal of discussion about it. The, it concerned the, the market comparison, they talked about there being, staff had looked at trying to do a minimal increase on parking rates in the parking lots, and, and what they call the bridge area, which is on A1A east of the intracoastal, or on Atlantic Avenue, east of the intracoastal, and then raising just the rates along A1A to 275 an hour. The Parking Management Advisory Board felt that having two different rates in the parking areas on the beach would be confusing. They made a motion to raise the rates, to recommend to the commission that the rates be raised to 275 in all areas of parking east of the intracoastal. And that was their, their recommendation. There was one dissenting vote who expressed a desire to raise the rates to a higher rate, and voted against it. I think that, that gentleman may have reached out to you earlier today to encourage you to reconsider the, the amount that is charged. We also took the, took the rate survey to the Downtown Development Authority and carried forward the information about the Parking Management Advisory Board's vote to raise the parking rates to 275 across the board. The Downtown Development Authority had a, had a very robust discussion about it. They, they expressed concerns about raising the rates. They shared those with you during public comment this evening. Their, excuse me, their concerns were that, that merchants in the area have, have been reporting business challenges based on paid parking, and that they felt that there should be more time to gain additional input from the beach area merchants and residents. They also voted to request that any parking fees that might be raised from this be put back into an, an enterprise fund, that would be used specifically to pay for parking improvements around the city in, in the future. They passed the unanimous motion to recommend to, to the commission that you deny any parking rate increase at this time, until the DDA can consult with the merchants and property owners on this issue. So, where we are right now, our parking rates that are established in the beach area do not prioritize premium parking. Everything on the beach is $1.50 an hour, which is, is the same whether you're parking on A1A, parking in, in one of the parking lots, or parking on Atlantic Avenue, east of the, east of the bridge.
Except for the bridge is $150 an hour, so there's that.
Ooh.
I'm just teasing, go ahead. You missed the part.
Well, you know, we do premium park there. Well, you know, we do premium park there. Yeah, sorry about that.
That's quite all right.
Anyway, so our total revenue that we project for the beach area is about $2 million a year, based on a number of criteria. It's a relatively complicated projection that we use, that it estimates the number of turns that we'll have per parking place and gives 10 days' worth of rainy days where the parking won't be utilized very well. So, these are estimates, so it's just like, we always tell you about models. All models are wrong, some are useful. So, these numbers give you a general idea of the kind of revenue that we could realize. So, the staff's recommendation to Commission this evening is that you could discuss the potential changes to parking rates. I have given you a number of different scenarios here to take a look at. It may be a little bit overwhelming for you. The attached Resolution Number 181-21 has included in it the original recommendation of staff for 275 along A1A and $2 an hour in the lots in the bridge area on the beach. If, on the table that is presented up here, that would be the very first line, where that would increase the revenue from the existing $2,500,000 to $3.1 million annually, which is a net increase of about 1.1 million. If the Commission was to go with the $5 an hour in all areas on the beach, that would increase your revenue to 6.7, just under 6.7 million dollars, which would be an increase of more than $4 million annually from that effort. And then just about everything that you could figure in between there is listed.
We so appreciate that.
Well, and that is the end of the presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have or discuss it in any further. I used as a baseline $2 an hour for the bridge and lots, which, of course, those numbers are also, I just didn't want to put such an overwhelming chart up here for you, so.
Thank you. Thank you for that. To the Commission, yes.
Question, if I may. Had you- did you, I believe you said, mentioned something about comparing this to other areas?
Mm-hmm.
What, where are we at with comparison to other areas in terms of parking?
That was that first slide, I think, that you-
Yeah, that was-
Do you go back to that for a second?
Sure, let me get back to that slide.
Right.
It's difficult to read on here.
No, and we went through it kind of quickly.
Right, but right now, at $1.50 an hour, we're the lowest rate, or we're equal to some of the other places that also have a low rate. There are a couple of them up there that say $1 an hour.
Right.
Those are for parking lots that are well off the beach, so it's a good walk down to the beach and we, because our parking is all adjacent to the beach, we did not consider that comparable. But for comparable parking, we're the lowest and equal to a couple of the other places.
I know I was down at Deerfield Beach not too long ago, and I was not on the beach, and I seem to remember paying $5 an hour. I know that this says four. I don't know if it was, you know, maybe they changed, I'm not sure, but regardless, I thought it was $5 an hour. It seemed like it was quite a lot, especially considering-
It's increased Friday night through the weekend.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that could be how they're doing it. It just depends on the population and how strong it is. And that says a lot about that we shouldn't be so concerned about confusing people, okay? Because they're going into other cities and there are many different parking rates for all across their cities as well, so I'm not so concerned about that. I think that Laura Simon brought up a very important point, which is if you increase the rates along the most prime areas, let's say along just A1A, they will start to park elsewhere, which will push out patronage to, you know, the different businesses. My thoughts are this, those are prime parking spots, people will pay for them. If you time-limit some of the ones that are closer to the bridge, and so a person who's going down to the beach that wants to spend three, four hours at the beach can't do that and not have to jump up and go run and pay a meter or, you know, get a ticket, or maybe it just limits it so that you only have two hours parking there, that might be the way to be able to treat the two different areas differently. When I look at those figures, as far as the revenue that we're able to bring in as a result of, for the most part, visitors, because everybody who is a, you know, a citizen could actually pay, you know, get a parking permit, it pains me.
Right.
And I am, I was never a supporter of parking, but I'm looking at this and saying, when we have the types of deficits that we've dealt with, and I look at our neighboring communities that are taking advantage, I'd like to see us find a way to make this work and work well for the city, as well as for the taxpayers and also for the merchants. And I don't know that we're there yet, and I think that my colleague had brought up that the potential of allowing the Parking Board to look at it again, and especially given this information that you've given us, and figure out, is there a way to be able to really kind of look at a much larger number than just the 1.1 million dollars we'd be seeing in, you know, as a figure with doing something that would be a little bit more of a hybrid? That's what I would think would work for me, but I'm willing to listen to all my colleagues, so.
Oh, sorry, they're meeting on November 23rd.
Okay, so, let me start to my right, because Commissioner Frank, I mean Deputy Vice Mayor Frank will never speak, so I'm gonna say, I'm gonna recognize Deputy Vice Mayor.
Missy, thank you. One of the things that, my biggest gripes, I guess, is we always turn parking in the city into an SAT test, where it's $1.50 here and it's $3 over here, but if you're here before 5:00. To me, it makes it simple. I would do three bucks, all spots. As was stated, residents can get a nice beach parking permit to save a lot of money if they frequently go, but to me, $3, I think, is fair, because people tend to go to the beach, you know, for four or five hours at a shot. I can last three when I go, because it gets hot. But, on a side note, I know we shouldn't, we talked about it, I feel like it's months ago, we gotta do something with that railroad lot. It's just being used by employees to park there all day. That's a premium lot, and some of the private lot owners in there are charging a lot of money. And one of the companies, I guess, is being investigated, because they're booting cars and they're not supposed to be, and I know it's not in the city's purview or control because it's private. They think it is the city.
Yeah.
And I get, you know, emails or messages quite often. They think that-
Which lot?
I know the-
By the pinball.
Yeah, the railroad lot.
How can somebody else boot that lot? That's not-
Because there's private spots towards the street, towards Fourth.
Oh.
That we don't have.
Okay, gotcha. I'm sorry.
So, I know, I shouldn't be bringing that up, but hopefully, we have some recommendations about that lot, but to me, $3 all, make it simple, you don't need the 75 cents stuff. I think it would be a nice revenue stream for the city. And one thing, you know, I know it's frequently brought up, is that people can't find spots, or they can't do this. Well, people can always find spots. They may not be able to get them where, exactly where they want to go, however, that's kind of controls the beach, that it doesn't get overrun, so I don't necessarily think it's a bad thing. But, I applaud your efforts, I know it's not easy, and thank you.
Mr. Cassell?
You're welcome. I'm, you know, more in agreement with looking at A1A strip and going up. I'm a little concerned about the downtown, the merchants and the impact on them. So, but if you go up too high, if you go, if you are going to a restaurant and you're parking in the beach parking, could add an additional $10 to $15 to your bill at the end of the night. So, it is something to be concerned about, but the revenue is awfully enticing. So, I would probably look to increase along A1A, potentially in the lots, but maybe not the bridge. So, you're probably gonna get a lot of variety up here, I feel.
Commissioner Boyleston, it's gonna be, I think, five different angles here, anyway.
I agree. I think the first red flag was seeing the Parking Advisory Board and the DDA not even close to on the same page, so it felt like this has to be baked a little bit more. This is a dangerous slide, because really, the revenue should be the icing on the cake when it comes to parking. The cake should be that you're managing parking, you're trying to move people where they should be. There was a time where it was cheaper to park on Atlantic Avenue than to park in the garage. That was not a good parking system.
Of course not.
Right, and we flipped that, and we changed that. So, when I look up here and see that it's the same to park in the lots as it is almost on the beach.
Right.
That's obviously a problem, that's something we need to address. And then you start looking at these numbers, and that's dangerous, because really, the reason we're doing this is to manage parking, move people around where we want them to park, where we, you know, can charge extra for. So, I'm really not comfortable in making a motion tonight. I don't know if it's, there's an opportunity to potentially table this, and we look to the DDA and the Parking Advisory Board, who has always worked really well together, and really, you know, I'm surprised that maybe it just needs a little bit more time of those two boards getting together and coming forward with a recommendation that's maybe a little bit closer.
Could I ask another question? If I may? Missy, is it possible to try and look at timeframes and adjust the rates? So, say you know the beach is gonna be busy from 11 to 4. Rank up the rates from 11 to 4, but then people who may want to park over there to go, say, across the street to the restaurant, you reduce it at 4, or the dinner time for the people who would be dining, and leave it reduced in the morning for breakfast. I don't even know what time it starts, because it doesn't start till a little later, right?
So, paid parking on all areas east of the intracoastal is only from 8 o'clock in the morning until 8 o'clock in the evening.
Anyway.
There, it's free after 8 o'clock.
From 8 to 11, potentially, you could have a slightly lower price, or 8, maybe to 11, to allow for people to go out, maybe eat at one of the restaurants there across the street from the beach. 11 to 4, you could potentially have it picked up a couple bucks an hour. 4 o'clock, 4:30, knock it back down for the people who maybe are parking to dine. I'm saying, I'm sure there's ways we could work this out to still accommodate businesses in their prime hours, but then accommodate our need for some additional income.
I will say that most of the spots that you're talking about are full all the time.
Yeah, they are.
There's not a, there's not a time where it's less unless it's pouring rain outside.
Right.
Agreed. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Moore, you can look forward to this being an item that will be discussed ad infinitum on a regular basis.
Understood.
Because we can never, ever come to a happy agreement. It keeps coming back and coming back, and I would like to also say, I'm very surprised that there is such a disagreement between the Parking Advisory Board and the DDA. They've usually come in together after a little wrangling back and forth, but since I've been up here, this has been an annual, I don't remember the time, now it's at the holidays. It's interesting to see what the other locations, cities, rather, are doing, because as the mayor, who probably has been to more of the beaches than I have, I don't know.
Probably not, but go ahead.
You mentioned Deerfield, I've never been there. It appears that, I don't know if they're as close as ours, we have a very unique situation. We just can never seem to agree on what is equitable. We have, I'd like to term them old Delrayans, who used to come into the city and enjoy a day. We don't have that, they're senior citizens, a lot of them, and they want to park on the avenue because they're not willing or able to park in the garage, which I don't even think we were discussing the garages, unless we talked about it. Forgot, apologize.
Actually-
If ever one of you said something about how we use the garages to offset what was going on in the app. We just can never seem to get there where it'll stick for two years, whatever. So, just a warning, you're gonna see it again, no matter what we decide.
See. Do we have a parking study out there?
We do. There's a Parking and Curbside Management Study-
Right.
-that will look at all of the downtown areas.
When do we expect that?
We expect to have that by the first of the year, so we're, we have a draft report in hand that we're-
Well, maybe it does make sense then.
We're reviewing.
Put this off, get some input, and-
This area will not be included in that study. That study is just for the downtown area, it's for areas west of the intracoastal.
Got it.
Okay, so-
How far, how far is it? Just on Atlantic, or do you go two blocks in on both sides, north and south, or are you including the garages?
For the area that we're talking about now, or for the curbs-
The study, the study.
The study will take in all the paid parking areas in the downtown area in general.
Public and private.
That's not private, we don't regulate private parking.
No, but do you not think it would be advisable to at least let us know? I don't even know how many private parking spaces we have and where they're located. And I think there's always been a problem, Mr. Moore, with signage. A lot of people don't recognize what is private. They park on them and they're booted, and the next thing you know, I don't know if that's such a problem as it has been in the past. It is still, according to Ms. Simon, who's nodding her head, we have a parking problem in this city and we never seem to resolve it.
So, let's focus on just this part of it, which is the beach parking area, and determine how we want to proceed.
My apologies, that study was approved prior to me, I didn't realize what was in it. So, I'm willing to put this off for more input.
Ms. Jellin, would I make a motion to reschedule Resolution 181-21 for another agenda item, date uncertain?
Or date certain?
Would you like date certain?
This doesn't get advertised, so typically, we want date certain when we have to pay advertising costs.
After the next parking meter, Parking Board, I think, would be appropriate.
After it's been reviewed by the Parking Advisory Board and the DD in the Downtown Development Authority Board.
You can just deny this and direct staff to go back to the Parking Board and provide, to obtain additional feedback and then bring it back to you.
All right. Motion to deny and direct staff to collect additional feedback from the Downtown Development Authority and the Parking Advisory Board.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Ballston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that. I know that's a lot of work, and we really appreciate it, Missy.
Missy?
It's okay, we're gonna get-
I have tissues up here. I'm just teasing. Okay. All right, so moving on to 7F, which is the indemnification and representation of Mayor Petrolia, Vice Mayor Shirley Johnson, and Commissioner Julie Cassell, and City Attorney Lynn Jellin.
As the Commission's aware, the Old School Score Center for the Arts, Inc., has filed a lawsuit against the city. With that being said, I would ask that we not talk about the merits of the case today.
Yep.
This is simply a matter to discuss the indemnification of the name, city officials, and employee, as well as the representation. I did provide you the relevant portions of our Code of Ordinances that does provide for this for the four of us, and so I'm seeking direction. I do have counsel in mind. I have not retained anybody pending resolution of this matter. In addition, I did reach out to the Commission on Ethics to ensure that there would be no voting conflicts, because three of you are named and three of you would presumably be voting on this, and there's a Florida statute that's pretty much on point, that does allow, that does allow the Commissioners individually to vote on these matters. And so, I'm just, I would like a motion and a vote, once the discussion ceases, and if you have any questions for me, I'm here.
Okay, very good. Any questions, concerns? Yes.
I've had a lot of contact from taxpayers that are very concerned about this. Lynn, I did view your memo that we all received yesterday, and it was very well done. Thank you. And some of the highlighted things, I saw, "City officials and employees are entitled to representation or defense without charge for any claim or cause of action arising out of or related to the performance of their public duties." In our Section 31.16, right of representation requires either the City Attorney's Office or other counsel to undertake the representation of defense, or defense shall undertake, of city officials- to undertake the representation of defense, or defense shall undertake, of city officials or employees when the claims arise out of or relate to the performance of public duties. Section 31-17 of the Code of Ordinances provides indemnification to city officials and employees who are personally liable for the payment of claims arising out of the civil actions, settlement, or judgment, or the expense, costs, or award of attorney's fees. And you did give us a opinion, I don't know if it's directly on point, but it's pretty similar, about reimbursement of legal fees and costs, which says the common law provides that the public officer is entitled to representation at the public expense in a lawsuit arising out of performance of official duties while serving a public purpose.
Sure.
So my question is, are there going to be separate attorneys retained, and who's going to be retaining them?
So at this point, I have two attorneys that I believe would need to be retained. One would be representing the City of Delray Beach, because the City of Delray Beach was named as a defendant. The other attorney would be re, representing all the individual defendants. There's no conflict of interest at this point. You know, administratively, I will speak to the other defendants about disclosure of conflict of interest, and, and understanding that if at some point the conflict does materialize, that they may need to seek independent counsel, but that is not an issue at this point.
Okay. I, I went through the city ordinances, and, you know, they're, they're very clear. I think they were updated, but for the record, I think it's important for the public to know that under our ordinances, Section 31.16, right of representation, the City's Attorney's Office, insurance, defense, counsel, if applicable, or other, other counsel appointed by the City Commission shall undertake the representation or defense without charge of city officials and employees with respect to any claim or cause of action arising out of or related to the performance, as city officials or employees, as defined by Section 31-15 of their public duties. And 31-17, we went through indemnification, and it clearly states where the claim resulted from activities that were done in good faith, in which the city has an interest. Three, where the, were within the course and scope of employment, or in the course of performance of public duties of the person so acting. And four, were not willful, wanton, or malicious. And then Section B of that, Section 31-17, states, notwithstanding the foregoing, any city official or employee who acts outside the scope of his or her authority or employment in bad faith with malicious purpose, or in a manner exhibiting wanton or willful disregard for human rights, safety, or property in the course of performance of his or her public duties, shall not be identified by the city. What will be done to ensure the taxpayers' protection with that language?
Well, I think you have to continue reading. So if you see B1...
Yep, I meant one.
B1 talks about, and what you've just described is called an ultraviirice act.
Mm-hmm.
However, and I'm going to read it directly, the City Commission may ratify any such action or actions, and/or choose to, chose to indemnify such official or employee by affirmative vote of at least three city commissioners. So the, the ordinance makes it clear that despite the fact that there may be a belief, and remember, these are allegations. There's nothing that has been, there's no judgment, there's no liability found, these are just mere allegations at this point, that the Commission can, if it believes that it wants to ratify the actions, it has the ability to essentially override what you've just described. So, you know, that's in your Code of Ordinances. It's been adopted by the Commission, and it's before you as one of your local rules, local laws.
And I believe what you state is correct, and I obviously have stated many times, I believe, in due process, that they're simply allegations at this point. But based on our statute, I'm sorry, our Code of Ordinances and your memorandum, I'll make the motion to identify and provide representation for the mayor, Shelley Petrollia, Commissioner Cassell, Vice Mayor Shirley Johnson, and our City Attorney, Lynn Jellin, in the matter of Old School Square for the Arts, Inc. versus the City of Delray Beach pursuant to Section 31.17 of the Delray Beach Code of Ordinances with the following conditions. No party invokes their Fifth Amendment right in any deposition or any other proceeding related to this lawsuit. And two, if it is found that the city official or employee who acts outside the scope of his or her authority or employment in bad faith with malicious purpose, or in a manner exhibiting wanton and willful disregard for human rights, safety, or property in the course of performance of his or her public duties, they shall not be identified by the city, and all legal fees shall be immediately refunded within 10 days.
Is a motion on the floor?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, go ahead and discuss.
I'm just trying to speculate why someone ta, would take the Fifth, but if someone did, it would be at the direction of their representative.
Um, in the past, it has been done by colleagues on this dais.
Presumably with the direction of their attorneys.
That's fine, but you...
Under, under the direction of their attorney, yes.
Listen, as an attorney, I understand that. However, the Fifth cannot be used as a sword and a shield. It is certainly...
I'm looking forward to this trial case. I, I'm, I'm absolutely, I think it's, we, the reason for indemnification is so that when people sit up here and do their job, they can't be sued personally. There's a reason for it, and it applies to us. Putting conditions on it is absurd, in my opinion.
Yeah.
I don't know what's going to happen. Who, so read the second part of your condition, if you will.
It just, it just goes by what is in the code, but any legal fee shall be refunded within 10 days to the taxpayers.
If what?
If it is found that the city official or employee acts outside the scope of his or her authority or employment in bad faith with malicious purpose.
Who, how do, who determines bad faith and malicious purpose?
Trial or fact, whether it be the judge or the jury.
It would be a jury. And it would have to be a specific jury question, because typically the way that the, the allegations in the complaint are written as is, it would be, you know, did ex-defendant commit ex-civil...
I don't have any concerns about that, frankly, but I think the idea of putting on a condition on it is, is absurd, and we're, we're professionals that work together. We're being sued. You, you very well know all the background information that I know, sitting here today.
I bet so.
You know there's issues, and you know we have a right to terminate with or without cause. We terminated without cause. We sit here today.
But I, I believe in due process.
We're entitled to representation.
Absolutely. And I believe in due process.
I do, too.
And I'm, I'm aware that you believe that this is groundless, based on your written statements.
I do. I believe it's groundless, based on current Florida law and decisions recently in 2021.
All right, so...
May I finish?
Sure.
Thank you. If it's groundless, and you believe nothing proper's been done, I, I don't see an issue. I'm just going by what is codified in our local ordinance.
And I'm going to disagree.
Mayor, because you, in the past, have taken the Fifth.
Yes, I absolutely have. And if you want, you know, there's no reason to bring that up right now, other than the fact that, you know, what you're trying to do here is to put the three of us in the crosshairs that we're not going to be put in. So basically, you can just stop it here. And by the way, it was the city, the city attorney that's sitting amongst us that recommended that I plead the Fifth in a case that we were not even involved in. We were, they were trying to bring the city in, so I relied on her information as to what I should and shouldn't answer, so that the city would not be part of the lawsuit. That was the five times that I actually pled the Fifth. Accord, if I didn't do that, sir, we would have been brought into a lawsuit. And you know what? Because I followed her instructions, this town was not brought into a lawsuit.
Thank you.
That's the case that happened. If you knew the case and the facts behind it, you wouldn't believe all the postcards that go out against people like me when we're running for reelection, to make it look like we're actually creating more of a problem than there is. You should get your facts straight first.
I did. I read the deposition.
Well, unfortunately, we were not part of a lawsuit, and it kept us out of a lawsuit. And that's exactly what I would expect a future attorney to do. And I'm not going to sit here and agree to anything that you're putting in writing, because I would prefer to, you know, to allow my attorney to, to direct me. Anything else would you like to discuss?
I, yeah, I would just like to chime in. I, I want to look forward. I don't know the discussion about the past or these other items.
Well, I didn't bring it up.
Right, yeah. I want us to stay focused on this. I wish we weren't here. I think there was a million different paths we could have taken, and we wouldn't have this, this situation we have today. With that said, at any point, someone can file a lawsuit against any of us.
That's correct.
Or anything.
That's right.
While I've been on the dais, we have spent, it seems, a lot of taxpayer dollars, being in lawsuits that, some were unavoidable, some may be avoidable, with different actions. I, I realize your concerns, Mr. Frankel. I don't think I could support limiting their ability to defend themselves.
Thank you.
I don't think I could put a timeframe on them reimbursing the city of, of 10 days. But I am interested in the conversation in regards to the taxpayer dollars, if, if you, if it does come out that, and as you were mentioning, Ms. Jellin, that the jury would have to vote on that, and if it was, would, would, would there be, is there a protocol for being reimbursed if the outcome is a certain outcome?
I mean, if you read your, your Code of Ordinances, you know, the, the four of us are being sued in our individual capacity.
Right.
And so the, the code is very clear. City officials or employees who are personally liable for the payment of claims arising out of a civil action, settlement, or judgment, or the expenses, costs, and awards of attorney's fees arising therefrom, shall be entitled to indemnification. And then there's the four elements of an ultraviirice act. And then when you go to the subsection B, it talks about, almost like a waiver. So you can say, you know, we understand that the allegation makes it look like somebody may have acted outside the course and scope of their duties. However, you know, we recognize that we still are going to accept the actions and, and move forward. And so, you know, based on what Commissioner Frankel is asking for, we would essentially, the city, it would almost, I think you'd almost have to file, like, a crossclaim or something, because you're not going to be able, a jury is not going to make those findings necessarily as part of their verdict. And so you'd have to file some other cause of action in the event that the city felt that reimbursement were necessary. Don't want to talk about our defenses, that's going to be down the line, but typically, when officials act in a vote, it's the city who gets sued, not individuals.
Right.
So, you know, for, from a legal perspective, you know, it, it was surprising to see individuals named, because when the vote was taken, nobody could have acted individually. It was a collective body that made the vote. And so, you know, I can't speculate why somebody would file charges like that, or claims like that, but it is surprising, because typically, and you've seen our lawsuits, they involve the City of Delray Beach. It's very rare that you see people individually named. And so, you know, obviously, I've spoken to the attorneys about it, and we're pretty confident in our position going forward. That being said, I can't move forward until we address the issue of indemnification and representation.
So I can't be supportive of the 10 days, nor limiting the ability to, to plead the Fifth. If you want to amend your, your, your motion, and...
What, what would you feel comfortable with? 30 days?
Well, I just think anything that's protecting the tax, the taxpayers' dollars, if it comes out that we maybe shouldn't have.
How about you guys just put it together, so that we can go ahead and vote on it, and then we can get to the real vote here, which is moving.
May I?
Yeah, that's what we're doing. We're having a discussion, uh...
Yeah, but I mean, the two of you are talking about something that I don't think is going to be supported by the three of us.
Well, yeah, we, I mean, I think...
Okay, so why are you sitting here dragging it on? Let's get to the point.
Well, you often...
Because, uh, uh, Mayor, even when I know what the outcome's going to be, I still, I still have to vote. It's not just call the roll on you three. I still, I still have to vote. And so my colleague has, has made a motion for something that I didn't consider, and I want to discuss it with them, and this is the time to do it.
I'd like to say discuss it with us, not just him.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. May I? Is it, may I? This is the very reason that no one wants to run for public office in this country anymore. Fact that we do our level best to do the city's business on a daily basis, and because we have become such a litigious society, we are constantly under the pressure of, do I just sit here and do nothing that I see that maybe should be changed, and if whatever I'm saying and voting on is going to be challenged, do I just sit here and allow the activity, the action, the whatever, to continue? I appreciate the fact that there is something that's going to support the public officials who are doing their level best to do the, the city's business. So, Mayor, allow them to continue.
Well, I would also, I, I, I hundred percent agree with you, and it starts with the people on this dais, and I'm not getting the feeling that they really expect that we did the right thing, and that's the problem that I'm having. But go ahead and continue the conversation, so we can get moving. It's already quarter till seven.
Mayor, it's not like you've been wildly supportive of us during your time as mayor.
Okay, so are we getting into that? Let's stick with the, with...
So, so let's...
Stick with this.
Let's not go there. Ms. Johnson, I think, I think you make a really, I think you make a really good point. And I'd like to, I'd like to say to Commissioner Frankel, we do send a message out to anyone that is willing to serve on, on a board or the board that we sit on right here today. And, you know, I think we have, we have to have each other's backs, and I know, I know we're going to be questioned in regards to how we're using taxpayer dollars, as we are with any, any lawsuit, and anytime we need to defend ourselves. So I would, I have second to vote. We can call the vote, but I think I'll be supportive in, in moving forward today without any of those restrictions.
Based on the conversation, I, I will respectfully withdraw my motion.
Smart. Another motion?
Mayor, you know...
It's a smart move, guys.
This close. We were, you know...
It's a smart move, is what I'm trying to say. It's, otherwise, we're just going to, we're going to end up with a 3-2 vote, and it's going to send a message out there that basically, had you not had three of us involved in this lawsuit, two of us could have been out there hanging because of a decision that was made by people that are sitting on this dais that should be, should be respecting and supporting each other. And that's really where I'm coming from. Ryan, it's not about trying to make you feel bad or anything. I just find it to be, I've been in this situation several times, and I can tell you, it's not fun. It's not an enjoyable place to be. But I can also tell you this. There's never been a time where I have not gone to court and, 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 and fa, or I've, I've gone to court and failed. The problem is, is the support behind you.
I, I, I'm not questioning your, your, your track record. I would just, this is the only opportunity I've had to have this conversation in regards to a very strange and odd vote that I have to make today. I'm having that conversation with my colleagues, and I think that, I think that the outcome is the right one. I wish we weren't, I wish we weren't in this situation. I think there was a lot of opportunities, and so when I look at the opportunities to, to be transparent and not be here today, so I wanted to have that conversation, because I want to make sure that I'm a good steward of our taxpayer dollars. That's all. I make a motion to approve...
Do we have to decline the other, or no?
I would go with this.
You can just amend the motion.
Because we respect and support each other, like you always done for us, Mayor.
I make a motion to you guys, it's like we're almost there. I make, make a motion to approve 7F.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Frankel?
No.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Ballston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrollia?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to public hearings, second reading, ordinance number 30-21.
Sorry, I went too far. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, adopting a comprehensive plan amendment pursuant to the provisions of the Community Planning Act, Florida Statute, Section 163.3177 and Section 163.3184, as more particularly described in Exhibit A, entitled Always Delray Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Ordinance Number 30-21, and incorporated herein by reference to bring the adopted comprehensive plan into compliance with legislative changes to Florida Statute 163.3177, 616I1, by adopting a property rights element, providing compings clause, providing severability clause, authority to codify, and providing an effective date.
Okay, Anthea Geniotis, Development Services Director. I think the, I do want to give a, just a brief presentation, because there was a minor change between first and second reading. So, as you know, this is a result of House Bill 59, which requires every local government to adopt a property rights element and its comprehensive plan. And so, that, we cannot do any additional amendments to our comp plan until this ministerial hurdle is achieved, and so that's what's before you today. We did work with DEO, and we did coordinate with I-Park and our other local municipalities to see how they were handling the direction. And then we drafted a very small element with goals, objectives, and policies that came before you. with goals, objectives, and policies that came before you. We received one comment, and I did want to address that, because that comment was transmitted not only to me, but they sent it to, um, City Manager Moore, and I believe also the mayor directly, um, stating that they wanted us to change our language on goal one, the only goal, to say that consider private property rights in local decision-making, not just in planning and development decisions. Um, and so, we've made that minor adjustment, which should bring us fully into compliance, and that's pretty much everything before you today. If you have any questions, I'm here. The commission?
Any questions, concerns? Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry, no, this is, this is a public-
Oh, I'm sorry, it is. I apologize. Okay. I forgot, too. Let me just-
I know, we gotta open it up.
My apologies.
Okay, let me open, open the, um, discussion up to anybody, uh, who is here that would like to, um, um, make a comment on ordinance number thirty dash twenty-one. Seeing no one, public comment is closed. We, do we have a motion and a second? Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance number three zero dash two one.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Ballston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
All right, we're into first readings, ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-one.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, adopting a comprehensive plan amendment and updating the ten-year water supply facilities work plan pursuant to the provisions of the Community Planning Act, Florida Statute, section one sixty-three point three one eight four, as more particularly described in Exhibit A, entitled Always Delray Comprehensive Plan Amendment, ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-one, and incorporated herein by reference, providing a conflicts clause, providing a severability clause, authority to codify, and providing an effective date. And again, there's no presentation on this.
First reading. Any questions, concerns? So, go ahead and, um, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-one.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ballston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Moving on to ordinance, uh, number thirty-four dash twenty-one.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter seventy-one, parking regulations, by amending section seventy-one point zero six zero, parking meter permits to adjust the eligibility for a senior beach parking permit from sixty-two years of age to seventy, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date, and for other purposes. You've actually seen this before, but we felt in an abundance of caution, because it was so long in time, that we would just put it for first reading again.
Okay, and does it have anything to do with, um, any of the, um, the fees, the permit fees?
No.[1722.18]